We actually have a COVID-packed house, so we're six feet apart, but it's good to see everybody out there. Thank y'all for being here. The Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Board of Trustees is now convened in a committee of the whole meeting on Thursday, August 6, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. in the boardroom of the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Instructional Support Center located at 10,300 Jones Road, Houston, Texas, for the purpose of reviewing that portion of the Monday, August 10, 2020, regular board meeting agenda designated as action items and to hear designated reports and recognitions posted in the meeting notice as required by Texas law. No action will be taken at this meeting. I want to welcome the members of our audience and our television viewers to this meeting of the Board of Trustees. As the Cypress Fairbanks Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. It is not the role of the Board to make day-to-day operational decisions. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent. We have policies and procedures in place to resolve concerns and issues. This is a public meeting of the Board of Trustees, not a meeting of the public. Prior to this meeting, board members received information related to items on tonight's agenda. Agenda items will not necessarily be handled in the order listed on the notice. The meeting is open to all who wish to attend and hear the matters discussed. During the course of this meeting, the Board may determine that a closed session is necessary. In that event, the Board will meet in closed session to consider matters duly posted for this meeting as permitted by Sections 551.071 through 551.084 of the Texas Government Code. These proceedings are airing live on Comcast Channel 16 and the district website. They will also be available as video on demand on the district website following tonight's meeting. For the video to adequately reflect the proceedings, I respectfully ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking and that cell phones are turned off or in silent mode. I just did mine. Please join me. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening and for your interest in the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District. I would also like to take this opportunity to recognize the community leadership committee members who are in attendance this evening. These people meet together about once a month, and I appreciate them being here. Would you please stand? Stacy Anderson? Thank you, Stacy. Leslie Martone? Thank you. And Francis Romero? Where are you, Francis? There you are. Thank y'all very much for being here. The recognitions, board comments, and citizen participation portion of the agenda will be presented at the regular board meeting on Monday, August 10, 2020. At this time, we will proceed with the public comments portion of the agenda. If you've not followed the Board in a number of years, or you haven't paid attention, we actually have more availability of public talking because there are two, two different places to be able to talk. This is for patrons who are duly registered per policy BED Local, may address the Board and make public comments on an agenda item during or before the Board's consideration of the item. The Board may allow public comment on agenda items at all meetings. The Board will continue with the remaining agenda after the registered patrons have had an opportunity to speak. Tonight, we have a number of speakers, and are we set up? We're set up over there? Is that correct?
They can do either side.
Oh, good. I tell them going blind. I don't even see that one. Okay. So first up is Donna Lord. Donna, come up to this one. And you will see that there's lights there. The green light will come on at 30 seconds before the end of the two-minute time, then the red light will, the yellow light comes on, and then the red light, please come up. Okay?
Good evening. I'm Donna Lord. I'm the president of SciFair TSTA NEA. I'm also a middle school teacher in the district and a taxpayer. Let's talk about how classrooms will function this fall. Many decisions have been made by the district reopening committee and shared with the CLC and various members of the community, but not with the teachers. Teachers are hearing specific information from non-official sources about how our classrooms will run, yet most of our principals have not communicated with their staff. Despite being on the front lines, these decisions are being made with little teacher input. Yes, you graciously acquiesced to our request to have teachers put on the reopening committee. However, it's our understanding that there are only three teachers on the committee. There are more than 7,000 teachers in this district. With all due respect, decisions are being made by people who have not taught in a classroom in a very long time. Some have not taught in a 21st century classroom. Imagine having 20 people not related to you come into your home all at the same time. After 55 minutes, they leave, and you have five minutes to disinfect all of your surface areas before 20 to 25 more arrive. This continues six to seven times a day, Monday through Friday. And while these people are in your home, you must not only engage with them in a meaningful way, but you also have to engage with people online at the same time. And don't forget, monitor those masks to protect them and yourself. I ask you, what type of expectations would you want in place to protect yourself, to make you feel safe? What support would you want in place to ensure your safety and everyone's safety? Are these the same expectations that you want for your classroom teachers? Please, if you don't want to collaborate with us, at least put yourselves in our place while you're making these decisions. Teachers deserve that respect. Don't make us beg. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lord. Ashley Johnson? Let him clean there just a minute, and then you can do it. He's obviously got to be quicker.
We have another podium over there as well.
Go over here. Yeah, there you go. That's all right. You need to practice. Ms. Johnson, you're up.
Thank you. Hello, Mr. Covey, board members. My name is Ashley Johnson, speaking, sorry, speaking on behalf of SciFair TSTA NEA. I'm a Title I middle school math teacher with more than 13 years' experience in a SciFair taxpayer. Teachers are anxious. We want this school year to be normal in our classrooms, teaching our kids, running our clubs, and cheering on our athletes at games. But as we all know, it's not going to be. And you're in an impossible situation, as every decision you make is going to make some group upset. We get it. We understand that everything is fluid. I want to address the issue of student discipline. A few weeks ago, I had the privilege to virtually attend a reopening committee meeting as a SciFair TSTA rep. I asked through the chat if there was any structure in place around student discipline specifically relative to violations of safety protocols. The district's legal counsel attempted to answer my question, which she distilled down to issues with masks, and she assured us that masks would be treated as any other dress code violation. I'd like to point out that in general, dress code violations are not potentially deadly, and the SciFair dress code is not designed to address life-threatening actions. Secondly, there are many more safety protocols to consider other than just masks. Your teachers need to know that you have our backs. Last year at my school, one of the three APs had about 60 unprocessed referrals before Thanksgiving. I can assure you that it didn't take long for our 1,500 students to figure out that teachers didn't have admin support for discipline. If there isn't at a minimum some discipline structure for pandemic safety protocol violations, we don't believe that we'll get the support that we need. I believe it would help campus administrators to have a predetermined discipline structure in place. That includes specific consequences that parents cannot argue with. I believe that sending a kid home to learn virtually for a week for a first violation would get parents' attention and their support for managing their students' on-campus behavior. We're dealing with a pandemic, and there should be a zero tolerance policy in place. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Mariah, I know I'm going to butcher this name. Najmadlin? And that's, I'm sure, totally wrong.
Very close.
Close, okay. I got the Mariah part right.
You did get the Mariah part. That's a good one.
Hi, I'm Mariah Najmadlin. I am a teacher in the 77433 zip code, and I want to address my concerns regarding the intersection of racism and COVID-19. As a Latina who teaches in a predominantly Black and Brown school, in a predominantly Hispanic district, I worry that not enough is being done to address the disparities minority communities are facing. In Harris County, Hispanics are four times more likely to test positive for COVID. Multiple zip codes in our district are in COVID hotbeds. These are zip codes with large Hispanic and Black communities. 77433, my zip code, is one of these zip codes. We are not providing equitable opportunities to these students or their families and the staff at their schools if we continue to act colorblind in SciFair. The Board acknowledged in June that SciFair disproportionately disciplines Black students. We have not seen a clear plan on addressing this specific issue, and specifically how that pertains to mask enforcement. Where is the intentional concern for our Black students who will be punished unfairly? If we are not intentional in our planning, we will also see the disproportionate positive COVID infection rate of Hispanic students in our district. We cannot leave Black and Brown students behind in another school year, not during a pandemic, not now, and not ever again. I ask the Board think intentionally about these community groups, not just because they're the majority of the students we serve, or because they're historically underrepresented in our GT programs, and historically overrepresented in our disciplinary actions, but because the Board believes these students are worthy of an equitable and safe education. When I speak on these concerns for communities of color, it does not preclude staff. As a teacher of color, I am predisposed to certain health issues, and so are hundreds and hundreds of minority staff members because of the systemic racism we experience outside of the classroom. When we take a colorblind approach to reopening, we ensure that the communities who are historically left out of the conversation are kept out. I've heard the Board throw phrases around accommodations like, "It's not fair because of X, Y, and Z." You're right, it's not fair, but this is about equity, and it's a science-based approach based on the available data. I am so proud to work in a district that celebrates opportunity for all, but I ask you that when you talk about these decisions, that you reflect critically and really think about who you are serving when you say the word "all." Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Henry?
Anybody else have that problem? Your glasses get pulled off? Good evening. I address the Board both as an educator and as a political candidate for the Texas House. First, I want to thank you for your measured approach thus far to the pandemic. I applaud the securing of technology for all students and the postponement of instruction until September 8. It's clear that you're trying to do the best that you can in a difficult situation. The governor, the attorney general, TEA, changing policy every day doesn't make that any easier. I've called for the suspension of both the STAR exam and accountability measures this year. Hopefully, we'll see some movement on those items. But the reason I came here tonight is to talk about educators. I implore you to increase your flexibility and your accommodations for teachers who are older in age or who have health concerns. I fear that we're going to lose a lot of really knowledgeable, talented people who are going to resign or retire early. My own mother-in-law, in a different district, she is 63, teaches elementary school music. She resigned this year because it's just not worth the threat. I wonder how many teachers, like my mother-in-law, this district may lose, and that's not good for our schools or our students. So if anything can be done to accommodate those who would rather be teaching remotely, I don't have the answer to that, but please do what you can to explore those options. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Henry. McKenna Coffey?
Good evening. My name is McKenna Coffey, and I'm a teacher in this district. I've heard that this Board will keep teachers safe, but I don't feel safe. We have not been surveyed. We have not had our voices heard. Only three teachers were involved in the Safe Reopening Committee. I've called HR and provided letters from my doctors asking for accommodations. I've been told that I can take, leave, or resign. Both options leave our schools looking for someone else to fill in. We will not stand by and lose colleagues due to lack of safety precautions, accommodations, and the opportunity to advocate for ourselves. We deserve options for remote professional development and the ability to teach remotely. I have underlying health concerns, and I'm in the middle of a high-risk pregnancy. Out of our three-person family, two of us are considered high-risk patients. My son, Henry, was born at 31 weeks. He was only 3 pounds and 11 ounces, with a heart condition called Schon's variant with hypoplastic left heart features. After two hospitals turned us down for the option of surgery and told us to give up, Texas Children's Hospital offered us less than 1% chance of survival. We accepted that chance. Henry made it through surgery, but the common cold, far less serious than COVID, put him into heart failure again six months later. By some miracle, he regained enough heart function to have another surgery and continue fighting for his life, through Harvey, through multiple codes, months intubated, and a total of four open-heart surgeries. Henry finally came home for the first time when he was 10 months old. There is no cure for hypoplastic left heart syndrome, and I will more than likely outlive my child. I didn't fight for him in the hospital for 10 months to lose him now in this pandemic. I advocate for my son fiercely because his life depends on it. I'm advocating for these teachers because their lives depend on it. I'm asking the Board to work with us on options. We deserve that, and our students deserve to have us alive. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coffey. Meglan Brannon Reese?
Hi, sorry. I'm Megan Brannon Reese. I am a teacher and taxpayer in the district. I'm here today because I'm scared. Fear isn't a logical emotion, and it can often override our better judgments. It is not a feeling to take at face value, but examine thoughtfully and dispassionately. When I start to examine the root of my fear, I see that though the emotion itself isn't logical, the underlying conditions that create it unfortunately are. Harris County health officials maintain school buildings should not currently be open in accordance with CDC guidelines that stress, quote, "the health, safety, and well-being of students, teachers, staff, and their families" is the most important consideration in determining whether school closure is a necessary step. It is not safe for teachers to return in person. Here are some brief stats to illustrate my point. Yesterday, 260 employees in Gwinnett County Schools in Georgia were under quarantine. Teachers went back to work there July 30. In Gwinnett County, there were 100 new cases yesterday. In Harris County, we had 1,800 new cases. Three teachers in a small Arizona district all got COVID. One died. They all took precautions. Currently, 116 children in Corinth, Mississippi have been sent home to quarantine. They started last week and have a total of 2,606 students. That's roughly 4% of their student population in a week. Mississippi has had a total of 63,000 cases so far. Texas has had 481,000 confirmed cases. Yesterday, it was reported within hours of opening that a child had already tested positive in an Indiana school. I'm here today to advocate for allowing teachers to work remotely. It keeps all employees safer and will help our numbers continue to go down. You've worked hard to keep students safe. Please do the same for teachers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. Martin, is it Skoda? Okay.
Hello, my name is Mark Skoda. I teach here in CFISD. My wife is an educator here, and I have two elementary school kids that are CFISD students. I'm concerned that students 10 and under are not required to wear masks. They've been found to carry, students at that age have been found to carry viral loads in their nasal passages at the same levels as adults. I'm too afraid, as is my wife, to send my kids to elementary school for that reason. Infection rates are seven times what they were, if not more, than when we closed schools in March. And we have the opportunity to keep schools closed for at least eight weeks to allow those infection rates to come down. You have the state support, and you have the Harris County support, and so I wish that you would take it. Schools will inevitably close. We will have enough infections in students and teachers that we need to close them down, and I would like to ask that teachers are able to teach from home. Please don't bring us back into buildings. Keep us as safe as possible when that happens. I am not happy that we are being made to go into schools for PD. I don't think that's necessary. Our PD is going to be online by ourselves in our classrooms anyway. We could be at home. I could be at home and make sure my two young kids are safe. And I'd like to also speak on asynchronous learning, since that's on the agenda also. I support it. I think it's an important flexibility for when we do learn at home. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Andrea Boronel? Boronel? Thank you.
It's Ashley Boronel Hunter now.
Okay. I wish you to put Hunter down. I'd have done that one, okay.
Hello, thank you for letting me be here. My name is Andrea Boronel Hunter, and I'm a teacher in the district. I know that I only have a short amount of time, and I talk a lot, so I'm going to go really fast. I have two questions. I know you can't answer them today, but hopefully you can do that Monday. One, why are there only three teachers on the committee? Two, are there any medical personnel other than the district's nursing teams on the committee? Teachers are on the front line, and yet we were not asked what we think or what we need. We have not been given a voice at all. You've already heard that. Now, I'm thinking logically based on data. Here is what I know. One, local and national experts, medical experts, say we should not return to in-person school until COVID has dropped to 5% or less. But in every zip code of this district, there are more than 300 cases. 77040 has 824 cases with 13 deaths. 77084 has 1,734 cases with seven deaths. That's 16%. In this area where I teach, 77433 has 1,017 cases, and where I live, 77449 has 2,252 cases, each of those with nine deaths. That's 18%. Second, with the survey you gave the parents, I hear that 60% have responded, and of those, 59% want to do virtual. So I'm asking the Board to please consider allowing the teachers with underlying health conditions like me the opportunity to teach those children virtually. It makes sense. That's the way to do it. Third, when I submitted my health condition documentation, HR told me that I had to either take leave or resign. I've been teaching 18 years, and I love it, but it just is not safe for me to be in the classroom with children. It just is not. So please change your mind and give the employees the same opportunities you are giving the parents. Please. I implore you. I hope you will consider the employees before you make your final decisions. You still have time to change. You still have time. I'm asking you. I'm asking you. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Canterra?
All right. Hi, I'm Kevin. I'm a teacher in the district. My wife is a teacher in the district. A lot of people have already come up and said basically my thoughts, and they said it in, with well-researched conclusions. They brought data forward. They are concerned, and they have every reason to be. I tend to be agree that we shouldn't be reopening schools. I tend to agree that we thought it was a problem back in March, and it had barely hit Houston. It's a bigger problem now. That's only sensible. But I understand people disagree. But the one thing that is really upsetting to me is I have teachers on campus. I myself have a slight immunocompromised position, but I can decide whether or not to take a risk. I'm very concerned about some of the older staff members at my campus, some of the ones with underlying health conditions that are worse than mine. Those of, and we're hearing all the time, "Well, I'm told I can take leave or I can resign." Well, if you take leave, you don't get paid. And right now, this is, unemployment's at like 30%. There's no place to go get money. They're going to choose between starving or risking their lives because somebody chose to open the building despite the fact that they knew to close it back in March. These people are not given options. They can take leave, or they can resign. That too. Oh, and lose their certification. It's not like they're going to get to come back in two, you know, when COVID settles down. We're not taking into account that these people deserve your respect. Some of them have worked here for 30 or more years. They deserve the respect of being allowed to work from home to help the kids who are going to be home. I've seen the numbers. We're looking at 2/3 of the kids so far, you know, in some schools, it's 2/3 have said that they're staying home, and that they're, I know some of the schools have it more 50/50. We have the ability. Take care of these people. They deserve that from you.
Stacy Anderson?
Dr. Henry, Board of Trustees, it's been a while since the June board meeting where the issue of racism was discussed, and a unanimous desire to do more than just make a statement was noticed. A subcommittee was created to recommend how you will influence further eradicating racism in our schools, and we look forward to hearing from them. Starting schools safely during a pandemic has overshadowed this important topic, but has served to highlight disparities that illustrate systemic racism and helped our community better understand the issue. It is clear that SciFair is a very diverse district and has already been on a path of understanding cultural differences, working through many issues and opportunities that come with this diversity. Strategies and programs are in place to address the needs of students and families with a focus on improving student achievement and ensuring opportunity for all. I am a fellow of Leadership ISD, class of 2019, the same group Trustee Julie Heineman was part of the year before. There, we learned about the academic gaps and discipline statistics for Black and Brown children. It is clear that those with the biggest disparity in both, even in SciFair, are Black males. Research shows most school districts want to change this statistic, but struggle with an action plan that measurably helps African-American students specifically and differently than other marginalized students. With any data-driven organization already focused on a goal, it can be difficult to see the forest for the trees. It is sometimes a challenge to self-identify innovations that could result in step-change improvement. For this reason, I hope to hear that an equity audit will be conducted by a third-party organization with expertise in this area, focused on factors impacting student achievement and discipline, as well as their work environment for employees of color. If any district has the intellectual resources, culture, community support, and courage to seriously break through barriers to addressing the biggest gaps, it is Cypress Fairbanks ISD. I hope you will seize this opportunity. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Jennifer Freestone?
Did I do it right? Okay, good. Hi, I'm Jennifer Freestone. I've been a teacher here in SciFair ISD for over 15 years, and in fact, I work at the high school that I graduated from. So first of all, I don't understand why HISD is having the first six weeks virtual, and we are not. I also don't understand why teachers must go to campuses even if all of their students are learning virtually. Houston is under the rule that a restaurant cannot be more than half-full, but you want to throw 300 of 500 teachers and staff into a building each day? Please look at one Georgia school district where nearly 300 teachers and staff were already sick or exposed to the virus before that first day of school due to having to meet on campus. I believe the parent survey is not being fair to the parents. By giving the parents the option of sending their children to school, you make it sound as if you can protect them. However, do the parents know that at some schools, students will be hacked into classrooms so tightly that they will only be three feet apart and not the recommended six feet? By the way, research has shown that exposure at three feet for one minute is like being exposed to someone for 10 minutes at six feet. It is 10 times the exposure. So therefore, students are more at risk getting the virus and So therefore, students are more at risk getting the virus in every single class, every single day, which was proven in Mississippi where over 100 students had to be quarantined just over a week after opening. I've looked at the positive cases just in Cyfair ISD and there are over 10,000 cases. This number does not sound like much, but consider that one zip code alone has over 2,000 people testing positive. That's like a whole high school building of students. However, at least the parents got a survey to answer. Teachers and other staff got no such courtesy. Why do I not get a say in if I feel comfortable about putting myself and my family at risk? Sorry, I've taught for over 15 years now. I love teaching, but I also love my life and my family's lives. I shouldn't have to choose between my livelihood and death. No teacher should. No human beings should. In the end, you are the ones who make the decisions and you will be the ones held responsible. I know that you want to make sure that students get the best education that they can, but many people get an education online today. It's not something new. Plus to quote one parent, "I'd rather have my own child be a little behind in academics or socializing than be dead."
Thank all the participants. Appreciate it. Before we proceed with the reports portion of the agenda, I would like to let the viewing audience know that the, each month during the work, board work session, the administration provides oral reports on various departments in addition to the reports outlined in the district's board monitoring system. The board monitoring system, a mechanism to measure the district's progress in achieving goals, may be viewed on our website under About Us, District Improvement Plan Goals. Five, 5A, the administration will provide an update on the reopening of CFISD. Dr. Henry?
Thank you, Mr. Covey, trustees. Appreciate the opportunity to present and we're going to have some, uh, statistics for you this evening that will, um, help you as you make decisions related to Cyfair ISD. But I would commend you that for the last five months and three days, all of our campuses have been closed to face-to-face instruction and they'll be closed at least another month and two days to face-to-face instruction. So we've had no instruction by any teachers going on in this district if we started on September 8th for six months. So I commend you for making sure that all of our employees are safe. Even the ones who worked all summer, making sure our students were fed, making sure our buildings were cleaned and making sure that all of the operations of this district continue to function and including all of our business services. But we, as we, uh, prepare to open, we continue to collaborate with the county health officials. We continue to collaborate with state health officials. We are aware of all the statistics that have been brought this evening and many, many more. And as I've said, the education of our students is the number one goal we, we have closely followed, if not equal to the safety of our students and the safety of our staff. And you have demonstrated that over the past five months and we'll demonstrate it for another month because you've already backed up the school year or two weeks to make sure that we have better statist- statistics in August. So, uh, no matter what is said, you have done what is right by the employees in this district, what is right by the students in this district, and we've tried to make sure that everyone is safe. We've had a committee working since the month of April to make sure that we provide you with information that will help you make good decisions on whether we should open September 8th or whether possibly, uh, we need to back that up four weeks or eight weeks, uh, if the board chooses to do that. But I will say that many districts made the mistake of starting school early in August and so they're, they're running through their eight weeks a little quicker than we're going to. In fact, if we delayed school for the eight weeks, uh, that the state is allowing beginning on September 8th, that would run us into November. So again, I commend you on making those good decisions of backing up the start of school, whether it be face-to-face, whether it be, uh, online or whether it be both until September 8th. In fact, I don't think you've made a poor decision up to this moment while at the same time making sure that all 16,000 of our employees have been compensated over the past five months and will continue to be compensated. So having said that, I'll turn it over to the chair of our committee, Ms. Teresa Hall.
Thank you, Dr. Henry. Um, I want to, uh, begin our presentation with really just kind of bringing you up to date and summarizing some of the events that have occurred since our last meeting. A lot has occurred since, uh, July, what was that, 21st, uh, when we met and we presented our plan. So if you'll go to that first slide. Uh, just to kind of give you, uh, a summary of the state and county events, I shared with you on Tuesday, uh, July 21st that the county had issued a letter, again, not an order, a letter that was urging school districts not to open for face-to-face instruction. And I kind of summarized at that point in time why that was not really an option for us to, uh, limit face-to-face instruction for those students who wish to receive that. Well, on Friday, July 24th, the county and the city of Hu- Houston issued a joint order that really, um, turned that into prohibiting face-to-face instruction until September 8th. Um, we really did not see that as problematic. Again, um, as Dr. Henry shared, this board made the decision back in June, uh, to back up our school start date. So we felt that that was really not impactful to us as far as starting school. That September 8th, um, we would see if there was any extension or any changes to the county order. The one thing that it did do, uh, temporarily, we did suspend our, uh, student activities that were going on on campus, our sack camps, our band practices, cheer, drill. We did temporarily suspend that because we needed to evaluate that order and determine whether or not we could proceed with those activities. Uh, Ms. Sims, along with many of her colleagues around the area, uh, spent several days kind of examining that and trying to determine, uh, if the local health authorities actually had the, um, authority to prohibit those activities from taking place. In the meantime, on Tuesday, July 28th, as many of you know, the Texas Attorney General Ken Paxton issued a letter stating that many, uh, of these county orders that have been issued across, uh, the state, not just Harris County. It was really referring to the orders that have been issued El Paso, Dallas, Bear, Travis, and of course Harris County. And there were some other, um, counties that were mentioned in the, uh, the letter that Attorney General Paxton issued. But basically it was stating that counties cannot issue orders prohibiting face-to-face instruction for school districts as a preventative measure. When you don't even have students in the school district or in the campuses, they don't have the authority to shut you down just because you think something may happen. They certainly have the authority to close a campus or to close a school, uh, if there is a current outbreak. If you have students in the building and you start to have a spread, uh, of the virus. So that afternoon in the weekly calls that we have with the Texas Education Agency, Commissioner Matt Marath came back and he said, okay, the attorney general is my attorney and I do have to abide by his guidance. And he needed to modify kind of some of the requirements and the guidance that he had provided other school districts around the state that were under these orders prohibiting face-to-face instruction. And I'll get to kind of modifying that or clarifying that for you in just a moment. Well, then on Friday, July 31st, Governor Abbott, uh, he followed up with a letter, a joint letter that included Lieutenant Governor, uh, Dan Patrick, our Speaker of the House, Dennis Bonin, uh, the House of the Pub, uh, Public Education, Dan Huberty, and then our Senate Education Chair, Larry Taylor, and basically in support of the opinion that was issued by, uh, the Attorney General. So how does this impact the reopening requirements that, uh, the state had laid out and the, uh, education agency have been guiding districts? And it, and it's important that everybody understands the funding framework that the state has established as we begin our reopening of school districts across the state. That if school districts want to open and provide remote instruction, they've provided that option and that availability to school districts. But if you provide that option for remote instruction, in order for us to receive funding, we must provide the opportunity for on-campus instruction for those students at all grade levels every day that would like to receive that. And they've said, okay, if you offer that, we will fund you for remote instruction. And then again, later in the, uh, presentation or in the meeting, Dr. Macias will be sharing details about how that plan will be set up. Well, the exceptions to that, they said there are exceptions that we, that you can be funded, um, and, and not have any penalty. And again, I explained this on, uh, Monday, July 20th, on, the 21st, sorry. On-campus instruction is prohibited by an order issued by an authorized entity. That still applies. But what they said is that order that was issued in our case by Harris County, that was not a legal order because it was not valid. They did not have the authority to shut us down as a preventative measure. But again, they could shut us down if we bring students into the campus and we have a spread. The campuses closed as a result of a confirmed case. Again, we have the ability to close a campus if we have, uh, a concern about a spread of the virus at the campus. But then there are certain limits on how long we can be closed and still receive ADA funding and that limit is five consecutive days. The district chooses to adopt a start of the school year transition period or we adopt a high school hybrid plan. So in looking at all those options, again, as I shared with you back in July, we have the option, we could open with 100% on-campus instruction. We recommended that the district open, providing our parents a choice of on-campus instruction or remote instruction. And I do want to share there, just, I'm going to interject this for just a moment. In making that decision to provide the choice for on-campus or remote instruction, we did feel that that was a health and safety measure for our staff. Because if we had the ability to reduce the number of students that we were providing on-campus instruction to, that was naturally going to help minimize and reduce the risk and exposure of the virus. The third option that school districts have is a start of the school year transition period. And I've shared with you that that's kind of been modified, uh, over time. But where it is currently, school districts may begin, and again, I say 100% virtual, they may begin the school year with 100% remote instruction for a four-week period. And with board approval, we could extend it to eight weeks. But this is the big piece that is not mentioned when you hear about districts that are doing the start of the school year transition, that you still must provide on-campus instruction for those students who do not have access to a technology device and/or internet access. So in our case, right now, that is a large number of students. Our questionnaire was submitted and distributed so that we could solicit that information and better understand who those students are, how many are we talking about? And that can help drive our decisions and our ability of knowing what we'll be able to do with the start of the school year transition if we determine that that plan is necessary. The high school hybrid plan, again, we've talked about that as an option. Uh, that is where high schools, school districts can provide, um, the opportunity for an alternating day schedule, an A day and a B day. And again, having half your students on the, in the campus on an A day, the other half on a B day. But for grades pre-K through A, you still must provide on-campus instruction for every student every day. So when looking at that, we really did take teachers into consideration for that. I know that, um, that it doesn't feel that way or I'm hearing that expressed, but really we saw the administrative burden on teachers with an alternating day schedule. Then with the flexibility of students being virtual, um, I mean, on-campus one day and then they can go remote the next. And then you've got kids that have to be there every day to manage that and know what schedule the kid is on, where they are in the lessons. That would be incredibly overwhelming and burdensome on the classroom teacher. So we chose not to recommend that as an option. On, uh, Monday, July 27th, uh, we launched our Lead Safely Plan. And, um, board members, you have a thick binder there that provides you all of the details, uh, that are included in that plan. Um, I do want to take this opportunity, first off, just to commend our communication team. I mean, the fact that they were able to put together all of that information into one comprehensive, easily understood, easy-to-follow document with all the links to the detailed protocols was nothing short of amazing. That was months of work, lots of detail, and then just the, um, just how nice it looks. The graphic design of that, uh, and everything was just outstanding. And, uh, Ms. Francis and her team, I do, I just commend them for all of their work on that. Our Lead Safely, uh, website or webpage, since we launched on July 27th, we've had 199,083 page views since July 27th. So definitely, uh, our communication plan is working. Lots of folks are accessing that information. In addition to the detailed health and safety plan that really outlines all of our protocols, we, uh, had a link to our questionnaire that was going to provide the opportunity for parents to give us information on the learning option that they were, uh, choosing for their child, whether they were going to select remote or on-campus. It also provided the opportunity for us to receive information on a student access to technology devices and internet, whether or not a student was requesting transportation. This is the first year we've asked for this information. And again, I think this is probably a practice we'll continue in the future, but we felt that this was important in order for our transportation department, Dr. Kane Smith and his team to be able to look at those, uh, routes and the number of students that would possibly be on a bus at any one given time and create as much, uh, social distancing on those buses as possible. And then with the number of students that would be requesting remote instruction, what was their need for curbside meals? Uh, in addition to the questionnaire, we had a link to submit a question, uh, which was the opportunity for parents and employees to, uh, submit questions and, uh, we definitely would follow up. Since the launch of the submitted question on July 27th, we've had 1,543 questions that have been submitted and all of those have been responded to either individually and/or included on the FAQ, which is posted, uh, on the district website. Our customer care center, wow. I mean, they definitely have been working around the clock and non-stop. Just in four days, I believe the number they gave me was 4,500, um, parents were assisted in just four days. Uh, and then thousands, is it like an incredible number that have been called back in the evenings? I know we've had teams working after hours, even Dr. Henry's secretary, Ms. Reichert, she's been assisting that team as well after hours, calling back parents individually, assisting them with logins and passwords and making certain that they were successful in completing the questionnaire. So kudos to that team. Not only have they been working, uh, to get devices prepared and ready, they've also been supporting our parents, uh, with the call center. So we commend them for that. So the results of the questionnaire at this time, as we shared, uh, the preliminary, uh, deadline was for August 5th, yesterday. Uh, we are leaving the, um, the link open. Parents can still go into the Home Access Center and, uh, either modify their election or, um, modify it or complete it for the first time. So we've had, uh, what, 77% of our parents complete the questionnaire. I think Dr. Henry would share with you that he's talked to many of his colleagues around the area and I don't think any district has reached that number, that percentage, anywhere close. I think it's probably more close to 50% is what you've shared. So again, I think our communication efforts have, um, have been fantastic. And then our support from our customer care center. You can see that, uh, on the slide there, that 43% of our parents have selected CFISD Connect at this time and 34% have selected on-campus and 23% are still pending, have not made a selection. So you may ask, what are we going to do from here? Now, individual campuses are able to run reports and they're able to, uh, identify the students that are outstanding and they can begin those phone calls and those contacts individually and make certain that we get some type of response from every single parent. We're going to exhaust every, uh, measure possible to, to do that. Uh, in addition, like I said, parents can continue to log in and do that. I think that team was still working, uh, today and will continue to work, uh, the rest of the week and the weekend, uh, to contact parents and follow up. So on the next slide, devices. I'm going to let, at this time, I'm going to let Ms. Ross kind of come up and I want her to kind of share, uh, information on the questionnaire results for devices and then an update and on our, uh, one-to-one initiative. and then an update on our one-to-one initiative.
In an attempt to obtain the most accurate information to address our student technology needs, the questions pertaining to technology were expanded. Around the device, we asked four questions. Does your student not have a learning device? Does your student share a learning device with family members, students, and/or adults? Does your student have a dedicated learning device to use any time during the day? Does your student have a device already provided by Cypress Fairbanks? Around the internet questions, our student, does your student not have internet access? Does your student access the internet in public spaces such as a library or a business? Does your student access the internet primarily through a phone? Does your student access the internet through a hotspot already provided by Cypress Fairbanks? Or does your student access the internet at home through a paid service, either it be DSL, fiber, satellite, or wireless? To date, the number of devices requested are 43,800, and the number of internet hotspots requested are 8,449. On July the 7th, Technology Services introduced the CFISD LTE One-to-One Learning Together Everywhere Initiative. Or did you want to cover transportation?
Well, we can do, can we do transportation?
Absolutely.
And I can just, you want to go, go ahead, Bill?
Good evening. As you can see, approximately 25,000 students have stated that they will utilize our transportation services for this coming school year. Based on this data, Dr. Smith and his team are planning and preparing based on these numbers, and as Ms. Hall said, preparing for as much social distancing as feasible. They also realize we may have students arrive the first week or two that may have indicated initially no on the questionnaire, and they are planning for that as well. But we realize circumstances change, and they are preparing for the reality of having even more students based on those respondents that we haven't received. We will not refuse transportation or transportation to a student. If they're out there, if they haven't registered, we will pick them up and bring them to school. Curbside meals. The number of CFISD Connect students, those that are staying home for instruction who have requested meals at this time, is approximately 14,000 students. Our plan, or Darren and his team's plan, is to have a week's worth of meals picked up curbside at the middle school of the parents' choice, as they have indicated on the questionnaire. Based on the numbers we have today, we may have to serve multiple days per week at some of our campuses, so our parents are not having to wait in long lines. Or we may add additional campuses so that we can serve our students more efficiently and to ensure that they receive nutritious meals while learning at home.
On July the 7th, Technology Services introduced the CFISD LTE One-to-One Learning Together Everywhere Initiative. This initiative will provide a Chromebook device for every student, plus provide internet access for students that demonstrate a need. For student internet access, in order to provide optimal coverage for our students, the team made the recommendation for a dual award for service providers. The first portion of the award was for 15,000 Verizon hotspots. As of this past Tuesday, the first 3,600 hotspots have been activated, asset-tagged, and shipped. The second portion of the award was for 5,000 T-Mobile hotspot devices. As of today, the T-Mobile devices are currently located in the T-Mobile staging facility, and all 5,000 hotspots will be released for shipment to Cypress Fairbanks by Friday, August the 7th. All 20,000 hotspots are expected to be delivered to Cypress Fairbanks by August the 8th, 2020. For student devices, the team made the recommendation to purchase 80,000 Lenovo Chromebooks. The first shipment of 10,000 devices were targeted to be delivered during the August timeframe. 15,000 devices scheduled for delivery in September, with the remaining 55,000 devices to be delivered during the fall semester. On July the 29th, our Lenovo Sales Director for K-12 Education asked for a meeting to provide Cypress Fairbanks with an update. We learned that Lenovo uses a third-party manufacturer for several of their educational model devices by the name of Bitland in China. We also learned that the United States had recently sanctioned 11 Chinese companies, one of which was Bitland. Our Lenovo representative delivered the news that our August order of 10,000 devices would be delayed, and our September order of 15,000 devices was at serious risk. Lenovo shared that the timeline of four to six weeks was needed to relocate and bring manufacturing back online. Lenovo's plan is to spread the capacity across three different factories, including Lenovo-owned manufacturing facilities. Lenovo expects to have the first Chromebook devices roll off the manufacturing line by late August. Capacity in August is still in question, but Lenovo feels certain that the capacity in September is much more likely to meet our original September estimation prior to the manufacturing change. The good news is that CFISD will still receive the Chromebook devices, just not within the originally planned timeframe. With school starting on September the 8th, 2020, Technology Services knew that we needed an interim or a stopgap measure. We reviewed our current inventory and found that we have approximately 27,300 Chromebook devices that have not been distributed. In addition, we have 18,200 Windows devices. We plan to use a software package called Neverware to convert our four-year-old Windows devices into Chromebook devices. By distributing only Chromebook devices and not a combination of Windows and Chromebooks, our students will have the same user experience. According to our parent survey, parent questionnaire, 43,800 devices are requested, and the number of hotspots are 8,449. Our existing fleet of 55,672 devices, coupled with the inventory of the 20,000 hotspots, will meet the immediate needs currently identified in the Home Access Center questionnaire. Pictured here, you see, you see Ms. Katie Gentry, the director of our one-to-one program, along with several technology staff members, club rewind staff members, food service, transportation, and several Berry Center staff members collecting, updating, sanitizing, and preparing 55,672 student devices for delivery. Technology will distribute the devices, but we are working very closely with curriculum to determine priority. At this time, I would like to turn it over to Dr. Macias to explain the priority.
Thank you, Paula. So we've been working with technology very closely on the rollout of our technology. And so our priority one, we've kind of divvied up in priorities. So our priority one at this time is that we will provide the, the tools to our campuses that have a population of 75% or higher and economically disadvantaged. That's about 31 campuses. So they will be the first rollout. In addition to that, any special ed student district-wide that needs a tool is also part of that priority one. We're, we're beginning, actually on Monday, on August 10th, with starting to distribute technology. And we're starting with all of the, the students in that category I just mentioned who just requested the, the Chromebook. Because you heard, you heard her say that we're still waiting on the, on the hotspots. But they're coming. So that's our first group, anyone who just requested the, the tool. And you also heard, there's only 10% that actually said that they needed the hotspot. So that's going to be, that's going to be most of the students that we're able to get in that group. Our second group will be any other, economic disadvantaged student from any other campus will be our priority two group. And we'll also begin rolling out the technology to any other students who had that request. And then our final priority group will be any student who changed their mind from face-to-face to the CFISD Connect, because they will need a technology tool as well. So anyone who initially has said, no, I'm going to come to school face-to-face instruction, but then has changed their mind, then they will be the final group to actually get their technology tools.
I just want to, as we start this, Dr. Bernal's coming to the podium. During our presentation, we really did not provide detailed information on the work that she has been doing with our nurses and will continue to do with our nurses at the campus level to prepare them for student return and staff return. So we just kind of decided to add this in to the presentation.
Good evening, Dr. Henry and Board of Trustees. Thank you for the opportunity to provide you with an update from our Health Services Department as it relates to the current pandemic and the health and safety of our students and staff in CFISD. To give you an update on staffing, thanks to your foresight and realizing the value that a registered nurse adds to a campus, we are fortunate to have one RN at each campus. With the exception of ALCE East and the Carpenter Center, two of our alternative campuses, as you know, that are housed in the same building, and they share one nurse, and this arrangement works very well. I say we are fortunate because this is not mandated by law and not necessarily the norm at other districts. So I just want to take this opportunity to thank the board to make the service available to our students. We have a team of very dedicated and experienced professional nurses at our campuses who all miss their students very much and can't wait to be back in the clinics caring for them. We also have four licensed vocational nurses who float between campuses and help out wherever help is needed. These nurses are phenomenally flexible and knowledgeable, are able to step in at a moment's notice and support a campus, and we are very blessed to have them. As you remember, we lost our clinic assistants due to budget constraints a few years ago. But again, thanks to your foresight, we were able to bring them back, and they are so important to our nurses and our students in the clinic this year more than ever. We currently have a total of 54 clinic assistants. Each high school has a full-time assistant due to the volume of students at that level. Two middle schools share one clinic assistant, and three elementary schools share one clinic assistant. In addition to that, we also have 14 clinic assistant floats that also support our campus clinics and are able to move from one campus to another at a moment's notice because you're cross-drained to help at all the campuses. We have two wonderful nurse mentors who are retired CFISD school nurses, and they support all of our school nurses, especially the new nurses. We also have a small pool of substitute nurses as well. In the past, we have been able to support our campuses in the absence of a nurse successfully, and I am confident that we will be able to accomplish this as well this year. With a staff of over 150, Health Services is always ready to care for our students and staff, and especially this upcoming year. I also wanted to provide you with an update on personal protective equipment for our clinical staff. We have ordered and are continuing to order the supplies needed to protect our staff: masks, face shields, disposable isolation gowns, gloves, as well as biohazard bags for disposal of soiled PPE. Nurses are also able to order Plexiglas, portable Plexiglas shields through their campuses that they can utilize in their clinic depending on the individual needs of the clinic. We felt this approach was better than to install stationary permanent shields as each clinic is set up differently and each nurse has different needs. Once we receive the final number of students enrolled in face-to-face instruction at each campus, we will distribute the PPE accordingly and refill as needed and as requested by the nurses. As you know, many health experts from local, state, and federal health authorities are not always in agreement with each other during this pandemic. It is a very fluid situation, but we remain in close contact with all health authorities and have developed our district health and safety protocols based on their recommendations to provide solutions as safe as possible for our students and staff. Our nurses routinely provide health and safety training for campus staff at the start of each school year and throughout the year as it becomes necessary. And this year, this will be even more important than ever to protect everyone, and our nurses are ready to provide the education needed to address COVID-19. The health and safety protocols will aid the nurses in this process to ensure that everyone receives the same valuable information and is able to safely interact with students and colleagues when they return to their campuses. Our nurses have been involved in the online registration process all summer long. We have hired additional nurses to review immunization records until our nurses are back on contract, and we are collaborating with the Harris County Public Health Mobile Immunization Team to hold a mass immunization event for our students to help prepare for the return to school. This is tentatively planned for around September the 4th. Based on the amazing response we have had with immunizations provided at the Back-to-School Expo, we hope that parents will find this helpful. Last year, we were able to provide 244 students with 640 vaccines in a single day through the partnership with Harris Health Troubleshooters. Hearing and vision screenings will continue to be conducted this year. We are in communication with the Texas Department of State Health Services to determine the safest way to deliver this service to our students. And we're also meeting with our See to Succeed partners later this month to evaluate how this program that is so important for our district can be continued this school year as well. This is a project that is very dear to my heart, and I'm very grateful for the partnership with the Houston Health Department for this collaboration. You might recall that in January, we were able to provide 1,532 students with free eye exams and 1,446 students with free glasses. Throughout the summer, we have continued to stay in contact with our team through emails and Zoom meetings with lead nurses to share our protocols and guidelines as we drafted them. We have developed some strategies to help our nurses navigate through this ever-changing and challenging situation, such as, together with their principal, determining separate areas for well and sick visits in the clinic. While separate areas are preferred, physical barriers such as partitions, screens, or curtains may be used to establish separate areas. These will be individualized decisions, as I mentioned earlier, as the layout of each clinic and the setup varies from building to building. Nurses and principals are also identifying separate isolation areas for suspected, presumed, or confirmed COVID-19 cases where they can be safely cared for until picked up by a parent or guardian. We have purchased air purification systems for each clinic based on the recommendations by the Environmental Protection Agency that found that air cleaning and filtration can help reduce airborne contaminants, including particles containing viruses such as the one that causes COVID-19. Together with the Operations Department, we are determining cleaning protocols, and again, based on the individual situation and need, will act swiftly to correctly clean, sanitize, and decontaminate an area with hospital-grade cleaning supplies. Based on the recommendations from Harris County Public Health, we are drafting a protocol to outline contact tracing and notification procedures for campuses to utilize in the event of a suspected, presumed, or confirmed COVID-19 case. And since June 22nd, we have been staffing our Health Services Call Center to assist our students and staff with situations related to COVID-19. It is staffed with CFISD nurses who answer questions and concerns, receive and assess investigation reports, conduct contact tracing, and make recommendations based on their findings. We have been working very closely with Human Resources, Operations, Nutrition Services, Maintenance, Athletics, and all the other departments, and the communication process between us all is working well. We will continue to operate the Call Center seven days a week. Currently, it is staffed with three nurses Monday through Friday and two nurses on the weekends from 7:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., and we will adjust the staffing as needed over time. Our health and safety protocols can be found in the LEAD safely documents that Ms. Hall mentioned earlier on our district website. As you can see, it lists the protocols for health screenings for both students and staff, the protocols for students and staff with presumed, suspected, or confirmed COVID-19, as well as the protocols outlining the steps for students and staff to return to school or to work. These will be updated as necessary as changes in recommendations are made by our local, state, and federal health authorities. For example, a recent change was made when the Center for Disease Control issued that the requirement to be fever-free for three days without the aid of fever-reducing medications to return to school or work was changed to the recommendation of a 24-hour period to return without the use of fever-reducing medication. This decision tree... This decision tree shown here, published by the CDC, is aiding in our decision-making process on how to proceed safely during this pandemic, along with guidance from Harris County Public Health. It provides specific steps to take regardless of community spread, as well as for specific situations with no spread within the community, minimal, moderate, or substantial community spread. And we are waiting for the Health Department to provide us with specific metrics regarding positive cases and potential school closures. Working closely with Harris County Public Health, we are drafting guidelines on how situations of exposures to COVID-19 and positive cases on our campuses will be handled. As you can see, we will report each individual case to the Health Department, and they will evaluate and advise us on how to proceed. Should a second case occur on a campus, the Health Department will open up a team investigation, and they will determine quarantine and closure parameters and procedures for us based on local policies. These decisions will be based on the specific individual situations, and they may not always look the same, but please know the safety of our students and staff is our top priority. I'm excited to share that the hours for COVID-19 testing at Priggin Stadium have recently been extended to include Tuesday evening hours from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. The testing is free, but then appointment is required, which can be scheduled either by calling 832-927-7575 or online at covidcheck.hctx.net. I have been told that 30,000 additional tests have been sent by the federal government, and a contract was signed with a lab to ensure a faster turnaround time from two to five days. I've also learned that for some patients who need to be tested but are unable to leave their home, a mobile unit could possibly test them in their home, and this could be found out by the same phone number or online as well. And lastly, I would like to take this opportunity to clarify my testing comment from the last board meeting. I'm afraid I was not clear enough in my comments regarding testing. While I do value testing to detect COVID-19, I meant to convey that the test-based strategy to end isolation after illness may not be a clear indicator and leaves many individuals isolating longer than necessary. The Texas Department of State Health Services recommends that patients not test for three months after a positive result. And the CDC released this statement saying, "A test-based strategy is no longer recommended except for persons who are severely immunocompromised, because in the majority of cases, it results in prolonged isolation of patients who continue to shed detectable SARS-CoV-2 RNA, but they're no longer infectious." So I apologize for any confusion my statement may have caused last time. The safety of our students and staff is our utmost priority, and testing will remain a vital part of our strategy. And this concludes my department update to you. I do hope you found it helpful, and I will turn it over to the next presenter now. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Bernal, and I think that her presentation and the health and safety protocols that our Health Services Department have put into place along with the support of her team and the Call Center have been instrumental in our success in conducting a number of summer activities and programs. You know, although we were closed for on-campus instruction since March, we've had a number of employees that have continued to work since we closed. One team that has been on the front line since the beginning has been our Nutrition Services Department in providing curbside meals to our community, and they continue to do that along with the support of our operations team, our facilities and construction team. They have worked nonstop since March. And again, the health and safety protocols that have been developed and implemented, again with the help and support of the Health Services Department, have made that a success. We began the process, obviously, of conducting more student activities, and that kickoff was the success of our 12 graduations. We were able to successfully carry out those events and have a large number of students and a large number of guests attend those. And again, with the health and safety protocols that we had in place, those were very successful. In June, our early learning centers and our Club Rewind Summer Camps kicked off, and that has been a great opportunity for us to see our health and safety protocols in place with students. Even Dr. Henry's own grandson attends one of our early learning centers, and we've both toured the early learning center and our Club Rewind Camps that have been conducted at Matskei Elementary and Arnold Middle School. And it's wonderful to see the strategies that those instructors have put in place. Young students as young as pre-K, K, 1, 2, all of them, they kind of have their little hula hoop, their little circle on the ground, and have their set manipulatives or toys for that day, and the strategies that they're putting in place so that the kids are not sharing those items, and then sanitizing those at the end of the day, the one-way hallways that are in place. We've been able to really see all of those things in action on our campuses. Our strength and conditioning camps, and those have been very successful, and I'm not going to steal his thunder, Mr. Zapata's going to provide you with some information on that, and really some even great compliments that we've received unsolicited from community members that have witnessed that. Our band cheer and drill team practices, again with the support of Mary Running, who's also going to present, we've been able to carry those out with great success. And then all along, we've had special education students on campuses, and we've been conducting testing over the summer. And I share all of that because I do think it's important for people to know that we have been looking at and been able to modify and adjust and see how our protocols and procedures work, and I feel very confident with all of those processes. So now I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Francis to talk to you about our Back to School Camp.
Good evening. I wanted to share some very exciting news of something that's come to fruition since we were all together. Just a week ago Monday, Director of Community Programs Irene Ruiz and her team met at the Berry Center and looked at and investigated and brainstormed, could we turn the Berry Center into a childcare facility during professional development during those three weeks? You know, since our professional development this year is virtual, it freed up the Berry Center, which is usually packed to the edges with professional development. And so they quickly put some maps and plans in place and got it all laid out, and I'm really, really excited that they've been able to turn it around very quickly. It is not full, there is still space available, but that camp will be held from August 17th through September 3rd. You can sign up your kids one week at a time or all three weeks. Pre-K through 8th grade will be available to be there, and the really cool thing is they're going to operate a dual program. So for those kids of our employees who perhaps are going to school in another district, they're enrolled in another district that's already learning virtually, they can take their device to this Club Rewind Summer Camp, and they can have facilitated virtual instruction at the Berry Center while their parent is on their own campus receiving professional development. So that's a really exciting opportunity for our employees. Our employees' kids who are enrolled with us, who are not yet in instruction, they will receive typical camp-type activities, enhancement activities, fun and games, physical activity, et cetera. And those kids will be able to purchase lunch, which will be provided by our Nutrition Services Department. Many of those health and safety protocols that Ms. Hall was talking about will, of course, be put in place, and so we're just really excited about that. So like I said, there is still space available, it has been very well received, so any employee that wants to take advantage of very affordable childcare, come on, we'd love to have you.
President Covey, Board of Trustees, Dr. Henry, good to be here again. It seems like a million years ago that I stood at that podium to give you an update on our plans for the summer. But we've learned a lot during the last three months, and I think it's been to the benefit of not only our students in athletics, but the students that will be returning to in-person instruction. Dr. Bernal did a great job of explaining, you know, how her department has really supported us, and it's really been a cooperative effort between a number of departments that we've tried to execute our plan. They have been a key to us providing a safe environment for kids that choose to come up and be a part of our activities. And so I know you have a very full agenda, but I just kind of want to give you an update on where we are, because I know we've had a lot of stops and starts with activities. And I told you after our first week, we had about 3,500 kids that were choosing to participate, and looking at the numbers of surveys, that's not an insignificant number, as I think we had about, that's about 10% of kids that would be choosing to come back to in-person instruction. So I think that there's been a lot to be gained from that experience in total. We do feel like we have learned a lot, we feel like we're providing an environment that has been safe for kids. We have had a couple of interruptions, some internal, some have been external, that's been placed on us. But one of the things that I did notice, Dr. Henry had asked me how things had gone as we restarted this week. We were impressed to see that our attendance numbers on the restart this week were up. We had a large number of students that chose to come and to be a part of what we're doing. I do acknowledge that the decisions that all are making right now are very, very tough, and I can imagine the weight that you have on your shoulders. And I know for even our parents, I've heard from many of them, who are really probably on both sides of the fence on this issue, that they're contemplating what to do with their own kids. I would say that we have had, supporting those 3,500 kids, 250 to 300 employees that have been up here working every day, which is a large number of employees, and we feel very, very good and solid about the plans that we have, about as good as you can feel at a time like this. I do want to leave you with two things. It's been mentioned in the reopening committee many times about the people that are serving on that committee, et cetera. There are students that are included on that committee. And at the conclusion of our meeting this last Wednesday, one of the students asked to say something, and she stood up, and very eloquent student, and I think that's the thing that always gets me, is that the more that you're around our students, the more that you're really impressed with the quality of students that we have in the school district. And she quite passionately expressed to everybody that was there, parents, educators, administrators, she said, "You know, I'm hearing a lot about the educational process and how people are coming back to school and choices and statistics." She said, "You know, what's really important to a lot of us is the experience in the student life that we're going to be provided." She said, "This is vitally important to many of us, and many of us have had half of our high school years interrupted." And I think it caused all of us to pause and realize that we have to, I think, in my opinion, try as hard as we can to offer as many choices as we can for our students and parents to experience the things that are important to them. I'll close with this. There's obviously a lot of emotion on either side of any of this, but I did, I think I'm being drawn to the positive lately, and there was a positive comment. There have been some of the other type as well on social media, but I want to close with this. We had a parent that said that, "I hope this doesn't stir anything up," but I felt it worthy of commenting on. "I just drove by the school, and there's a decent-sized group of guys out running who appear to be high school age maybe. Most of them have finished up and are waiting for the remaining to come down. They are standing all at least six feet away, and everyone I saw had face coverings on. They had them down while running and pulled up when stopped. I just felt like acknowledging that it is obvious whoever is working with them is doing something right. Perception is important, and as everyone makes their decision about what to do this school year, it's nice to see efforts being made from this group." So I want to close with just publicly acknowledging the 300 staff members that have been choosing to come up and work with kids every day, and the way, the professionalism that they've exhibited, and the way that they've come up to serve. I do think that they're trying very, very hard to give as much opportunities for kids in as safe an environment as possible, and feel like that our summer activities have been a success. And as much as this is presenting a great challenge to us to figure out what this is going to look like this next year, and I don't even want to begin to talk about what ticket structure might be like for activities, or I don't want to get into that tonight, I would say that I am so proud of our coaches and the way that they've attacked this summer for the benefit of our kids. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Covey, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Henry. I just have a few updates about our fine arts programs and what we're doing to prepare for the school year and what we've been doing lately. Our marching bands and dance teams are beginning to return to practice with some this week and several starting next week. Each campus is creating their own schedule, and the schedules are being communicated to the parents for those campuses. In addition to the students that are returning in person, we've had several virtual camps in the last few weeks, and we've had over 400 students attending our virtual camps online for all-state orchestra music, all-state choir music. This week, we're having an oboe and bassoon camp online, and we've had our thespian students that have participated in an online virtual conference for the National Thespians Association. We are following the recommendations of UIL, and the advice they are giving is that we follow the aerosol study that is being conducted at the University of Colorado in Boulder. They released their second round of recommendations today, and we're going to be adding some mitigation procedures to the things that we're already going to be doing. One thing that they have recommended is that we add bell covers to the ends of all the wind instruments, and so we're starting that process. We've already ordered several, but we're going to continue to order those so that we have them for all of our middle school and high school band students. They're asking, they are recommending that all students wear masks when they are singing, acting, dancing, or playing instruments, and that we keep all of the students six feet apart. So that is going to be our procedure in our classrooms and in our performances. They've also asked that band students wear a mask when playing an instrument, and that's going to be kind of difficult, but they will have a horizontal slot in the mask, and then their mouthpieces will go inside the mouth, or the mouthpieces will go inside the mask, and that will keep their nose covered, and so that will reduce the amount of aerosols that are released into the air. Our recommendation for right now is that we are going to livestream our performances. That's going to allow us to keep our students six feet apart and for parents and grandparents to be able to watch these performances online. This is similar to what many of the professional organizations and the universities are going to be doing this fall. If you do not know, the Houston Symphony has successfully been livestreaming live performances since the beginning of the summer, and it's going really well, and our partnership with them has helped us with some of our protocols. Our teachers are going to receive information during professional development, starting on the 17th, not only on all of our safety protocols, but also on how you livestream performances. We've developed a partnership with the Audio-Visual Production Department to help our teachers with this process, which will be a little bit different, but we think that we can do that very successfully. We've been working on protocols for our art rooms, and we are ensuring that we have adequate supplies so that students are not sharing supplies during a class period, and then we will have a process for sanitizing the supplies in between class periods. Several of the organizations have moved their fall competitions online. The Texas Music Educators Association and the Texas Thesbian Competitions will both be held virtually, so students will be trying out for region music competitions and such as that, and they've developed an online process for doing that, and our teachers will help the students be able to do that process so that they are successful in what they submit. The UIL has moved marching contests to the end of November. We have that scheduled at the Berry Center. The, I'm going to say the wrong date, it's prior to Thanksgiving, and then they have scheduled, they're planning on the area marching contest taking place the first weekend December, and we also have that scheduled at the Berry Center. We've had great excitement with the students that have returned to practice this week, a lot of positive comments from teachers and parents, and one of them described it as kind of like it's Christmas morning, they were so excited to be back practicing in the 100-degree heat and marching and playing their instruments. I got to see one of the camps yesterday, and the kids were excited, and you could tell that they were so happy to be back and doing something and not just being at home. So we think we can do this in a really safe manner, and we're looking forward to seeing all of our students in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you, Ms. Running. In closing, I'd just like to kind of review the timeline as we prepare for the first day of instruction. Again, yesterday was the first deadline for submitting responses to the questionnaire, and that deadline was critical because that's going to provide our campus principals with a starting point for really planning for the number of students that would be on the campus, what would classroom teaching assignments look like based on the students that selected remote versus on-campus instruction. So I urge our teachers to be patient. One of the things that's been really challenging in providing So I urge our teachers to be patient. Uh, one of the things that's been really challenging, uh, in providing a, uh, constant flow of communication has been number one, that all of this is occurring over the summer. Our principals, uh, have been off contract. Our high school principals do work, uh, year-round, but they do get to take vacation. Uh, our middle school principals did not come back onto contract until the middle of, or the first of July. And then our elementary, not until the middle of July. So they needed the opportunity to really, we had to bring them up to speed and start, um, providing training and information to them uh, on the detailed protocols and procedures that have been developed. We had been meeting with groups periodically over the summer. But again, to have all of them together for one final, um, comprehensive training was important before they began their communication with their individual staff members. Uh, so much of the protocols and procedures are going to look different at a campus level. And so it's, it's important that, um, each principal have ti- has time to sit and look at that and then determine what is the congregation of students going to look like? How are we going to prevent that? What are our one-way hallways going to look like? All of those things. And they're preparing for that. And they're preparing to share all of that information with their teachers upon return, um, this month. Um, I think one of the value, uh, values in changing, uh, our school's start date was providing three weeks of staff development. Think that's going to provide, uh, sufficient time for staff members to ease back in, to come on campus, learn what the protocols and procedures are, start really figuring out how they're going to acclimate to those new procedures. What additional procedures would they need to put into their classroom? What support do they need? Campus principals, in addition to that, are reaching out to their, uh, their employees on their campus and determining what special requests, what special accommodations, uh, do they need? Those take time. They're very individualized and they're working through that individually. And then also with the support of Dr. Stewart and Ms. Franklin and their teams. They're, they're working as quickly as they can, uh, to visit and meet with those staff members individually and meet them where they are and try to work out the best plan possible. In addition to that, our, um, all of our district leaders, um, had, had the opportunity to go through some social and emotional training, uh, wellness training this week, uh, with our psychological services department and members of the mental health intervention team. And so again, that was another training about how we need to be prepared, not only in taking care of ourself, and they called it our own self-care plan, but also how we need to be prepared to support our employees once they return. So, um, we do have several weeks to go before students are ever scheduled to be on campus, uh, and in classrooms. But again, we've been working with students, uh, over the course of the summer. And in the meantime, we're also hoping that our local health authorities will provide more concrete, specific metrics to school districts. That's been a challenge. There has not been agreement among local health authorities, uh, across the state or across the nation. And so when there's a lack of the metrics or, or knowledge on our part about what metrics are you, are you using? When you say it's not safe to open a building, what are you basing that on? And it's not that we don't trust their, 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 uh, opinion, their professional opinion on that or their professional statements on that. What are you basing that on and what do we need to be looking at? And so Dr. Henry and many of the area superintendents, uh, are working diligently to try to, uh, get that information uh, from Harris County Public Health. That's what we need to be concerned about. So we will continue to work on that, continue to monitor that. We will continue to provide you information um, in the front of your binder, um, that I provided you on Lead Safely. I'll, I've shared with you that I'll continue to provide you metrics on a weekly basis that has been requested. Uh, and we'll start that next Friday and provide that to you, um, uh, in your Friday packets. Um, so that you can understand where we are as a district as we near, uh, September eighth. August twenty-fifth is the last day for parents to submit their questionnaire or make changes to their questionnaire. Uh, after that date, uh, that, the changes to that will be handled very individually. For those parents that we are unable to get a response, we're going to assume that that student would be face-to-face because that's what we need to prepare for. It also gives us time and the technology services team, again, I think if you get a chance, I would encourage you to go by the Berry Center and the setup and operation that they have going on there. I know you saw a couple of pictures on the slides, but I don't think that does it justice of what they're having to do to sanitize and prepare uh, fifty thousand devices or forty, is it forty? How many do you have there? Forty-five thousand or fifty, uh, devices, uh, ready for distribution. It looks, it reminded me during Hurricane Har- Harvey, the, uh, uh, point of distribution. I almost started like having nightmares because I'm just how stressful that time period was. But, uh, they definitely have a system going on there. So I end this by saying that between now and August twenty-fifth, we're going to continue to monitor the situation. We're going to continue to have conversations with our, uh, public health authorities. We're going to continue to monitor the data. We're going to continue to look at our campuses at an individual basis. We're prepared to reallocate resources across the district. Uh, Dr. Stewart and, uh, Dr. Ogumike have been working even with our staff members at ALC East and West because we're not going to begin school with any students assigned to our DAP. So we have staff members available at both of those campuses and they had a brilliant idea about having that pool of staff members prepared. And once we're able to determine where do we need additional support in the district. Um, and again, it's going to be campus to campus. Where can we, uh, send those staff members to provide that support? We are working diligently to make this a successful reopening. And again, I do feel confident with the protocols and procedures and the plans that we have in place. And we're going to support our teachers. Uh, we, um, I think that once they are able to make those connections, uh, personally with their campus principals, they're able to learn more about the plans that they have individually at their campuses. They're able to express their concerns individually to their campus principals so that they can help to support them through that. I think that they will feel much, much better. And, um, so that's the end of our presentation and we'll take any questions you may have.
Ms. Hall, that was, uh, an extremely in-depth presentation and I know you all worked really hard on that and I appreciate it. I know there's going to be questions. I can see Ms. Heinemann's pulling out Kleenex just to wipe her forehead. Okay, Ms. Heinemann, you're up. You have some questions?
Okay. Uh, thank you to, um, Mrs. Hall and to everyone who, uh, shares such in-depth and, um, detailed information. That was, um, it's very, very helpful. We've talked about, um, uh, in the absence of information, sometimes though that empty space gets filled with anxieties and worries and fears and worst-case scenarios. So to, to see that empty space filled with accurate information and more detailed, um, information about uh, how we're going to be reopening safely is very helpful. So I appreciate that very much. Um, most of my questions were answered throughout the presentation. The one I started with, um, still, um, has yet to be answered. And that's because we don't have the information from the county is how, what are those metrics? How is an outbreak defined? So when the county says, when, or if there's a situation or an outbreak, we're going to close down a campus or close down a classroom or close down a wing, we don't know what that, what that is. And so that puts us in a, in an, in a challenging situation because we don't know. Is it one case? Is it five? Is it twenty-five? We don't know yet and we're waiting for the county to answer our phone calls and respond to those, that request for information. Is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct. And all the superintendents in the county have asked for that information and not just this county, but surrounding counties have asked their own county judges and county health departments for that information. Uh, this week, um, along with Katie, Spring Branch and Klein, we're all kind of neighbors and all kind of have similar type of school districts. Uh, we have made a request to the county judge and the county health department for them to meet with us as a group of four, since we kind of represent the west side of Houston. And, uh, just as you've said, we're asking the county to provide metrics and not just metrics that, that say it's not safe.
Right.
Uh, we, we need specific information and specific information on different parts of the county. Uh, I'll, I'll use my old school district as Galena Park as an example. It might not be safe in Galena Park, but it may be in Sci-Fair or vice versa. Uh, and Sci-Fair is so big, maybe there's parts of Sci-Fair that have a larger outbreak than others. We just don't know. We, we, we trust the county. We just want the county to, to provide us with the metrics we need and you need to make, uh, good decisions.
It'd be nice if that was a collaborative effort where we can work together on that. Um, um, you know, we advocate often for local control, uh, as a board. And, um, I like that the, this approach that we're looking, we're giving even more control to the individual campus principals to further define and implement a plan that works best for their individual campuses. And I, I think that's a, a fantastic approach.
And you know, that's a good idea and I'm just going to, to emphasize this. We, we will have some campuses that might have seventy percent of their students show up and other campuses it might be twenty-five percent. So as Ms. Hall tou- touched on with allocation of resources, we may be moving teachers from one place to another.
Right. Uh, that requires a lot of flexibility on all of our parts. Understood. Uh, the last thing I will just say, because, um, I think most of my questions were answered, is I encourage parents, if you have not already filled out your survey and let the district know what your plans are for your students, to please respond to the survey so that campus principals can make those plans. Thank you.
Dr. Ogletree.
Uh, this, uh, Teresa and, and team, a great report. Uh, gosh, just a lot of, uh, thought and, um, has gone into it. I do have a few, uh, questions. And the, um, forty-three percent, uh, that have opted so far for C F I S D Connect. And then there's thirty-four percent, uh, on campus. And we have not done a survey of our, uh, teachers. And I'm wondering at, uh, at some point, could, it'd be stressed to our principals uh, that the teachers with underlying conditions, I, I, and the teachers who are at a certain, uh, risk factor, could they be given the priority on, uh, this virtual, uh, teaching? Now, I'm, I'm just going to ask that again. I know you, you all tried to clear that up, uh, last time, but I'm, I'm, I'm serious.
I'm ready to answer it again. So, no, I, it's a good question. I'm, I'm ready to share with it again. And like the, the idea or the, like, surveying teachers, the way that we would do an interview.
I didn't say survey teachers. I know you don't want to do that.
No.
But there ought to be some way that a, a teacher, not a survey, can say, I have an, uh, an immune deficiency. I have this. I have that. I am on this. Uh, I mean, if, uh, as, as I see employer, employee relationships, it's not just a contract. And I'm, I'm thinking that there ought to be some way, not a survey, do you want to do virtual, do you? But for us to discover, uh, those who are at risk and at least take them under consideration with, uh, what we are doing. Because, uh, yeah, we, we may have some that have been with us ten years, fifteen years, twenty years. And to just say, look, take it or leave it, I just don't think that's the approach.
And that's not what I've said or what I've ever said. And when, what I was going to say was that we wouldn't survey, uh, teachers because we wouldn't ask for, uh, medical information or that type of accommodation through, uh, through, through that type of instrument. But we've always had in place, uh, Sharita's team and H R, we've always had an interactive process in place. So as we've been doing since anyone who has reached out and then when they return on contract or prior to returning on contract, if we don't already have information about their, um, medical conditions or anything that may make them uh, require an accommodation or unable to perform certain aspects of their jobs or their job altogether. If we don't already have that information, and a lot of employees, we do, we do already have that information. We may already have individuals who, um, are on F M L, say they've had cancer treatment. Or, you know, so there's a lot of employees that we may already have the information and that interactive process is already going on. But any employee who, um, you might have a condition that in a typical situation, maybe during flu season, you're a little or more vulnerable, or you may need to ask for an accommodation of, of, you know, maybe not doing hall duty or something like that. Where now in this situation, it's exacerbated clearly, um, then that would be the interactive process. So human resources, we actually, because, um, we're training Sharita's team, I don't see Shar here, oh, there she is. If she, if you want to jump in, feel free, but otherwise I'll just share kind of what we've talked about is they've first been training the principals because we want them to have the information because that's really the first step oftentimes. And then anyone that needs to go beyond the principal who really does need to engage in that interactive process with human resources regarding an accommodation. Then we actually have a department, but Sharita's now trained her entire H R director's staff to have the knowledge that they need to engage in that process. So, um, I apologize that that's, wasn't emphasized enough in some of my prior comments. And I guess it's because we've, we've always had that process in place. It's just now we have geared up to, uh, be able to have more people be able to have that dialogue.
That is correct. And so as Marnie said, I'm just going to kind of echo what you've, uh, what Marnie has said that we've had multiple individuals within our district prior to this that have needed reasonable accommodations based upon their disabilities. And now we're having more individuals come forward due to COVID-nineteen. And so by all means, we want that information. We're going to have that back and forth about what can be accommodated. But we're going to be, really be working with the principals because once they get the numbers to identify how the instruction is going to look, they then will have the opportunity to be able to say, okay, we have someone with a, a compromised immune si- uh, uh, system, or they are more susceptible to COVID-nineteen that has come forward. They then can say, how does that align with the instruction that we need to deliver? But we don't have all of that information right now. So we do ask that employees allow that opportunity to have that dialogue with the principal. And as the principal gets the, gets more information, we then can support the principal and human resources on how that will look. Now, there are some accommodations that people are wanting in terms of being able to solely work from their home. We are delivering instruction from our campuses. And so we're communicating that. Outside of that, we are really trying to do our best to see how we can show pictures of the space to an employee when they come up. Take a video of it. Um, if you want to bring your own air purifier in. Um, I just had a conversation with one of my peers to say, is there a closet somewhere that's got ventilation? Can we clear out the closet, put the books away and create a, an, a room somewhere where someone can work in separate from others? Um, so we really are trying to do that. Um, and we will continue. Hearing the feedback that we got today, others are saying it's this or that. And we don't want our staff to feel like it's this or that. We really want you all to be heard and to, um, know that we really want to work with the principals on the accommodations that are needed.
And I, I want to echo that. And also I think Mr. Garcia, um, can share a little more detail. Back to your original comment, that has been stressed to our principals. We have shared with them, uh, that they make, um, those efforts to reach out to all of their staff members and request what accommodations or special requests they may have. Because that's the first step. I need to know what you need. And then what's challenging right now, and I think is adding to a little bit of the stress and anxiety for some of our teachers because they're hearing, we don't know right now. And that is because the, uh, the deadline again was yesterday afternoon for submitting the questionnaire. So now the campus principals are having to take that. And it gets very complex as far as, um, and I'll use elementary as an example. So now I've got to look at how many third graders, how many fourth, how many fifth on, on each platform? How many students is that? How can I divide up my students or my teachers based on that? Not overload the size of the classrooms for the students that are asking for on-campus instruction. Keep that down to a, uh, reasonable number so that they can create appropriate social distancing in the classroom. But then meet the request. But then meet the request of teachers that may want to and have as a priority of teaching the remote platform. So it's, it's really a lot of variables that they have to figure out before they can make any commitment about what that teaching assignment will be. The other thing that is difficult, and it, and it gets even more complex when you get to the high school level because of all the different preps that teachers, individual teachers may have, and being the only teacher that teaches a content area. So that's when we're going to have to get really creative. It may be a sharing of, of students even at a district level. So I'm kind of getting too detailed for you. But the other thing that makes it a little difficult, and another, is that kids can change their mind. Parents can change their mind and switch to on-campus instruction or vice versa. So it's just this constant in and out to try to make certain that they're keeping appropriate social distancing, appropriate class sizes, accommodating the special requests they have. So it's just a lot to figure out and difficult to bank real firm commitments to staff members until they figure all of that out. Could I answer your question?
I will say, Dr. Owen, I said this at the leadership conference the other day to all of our campus staff and all of our district leaders, the, the big word this year is flexibility. We've, we've got it figured out. And we have to realize this is not a permanent problem. This is a temporary problem for the next, we'll just say, 11 months. I've always used the term July 1st, 2021. So we, we're going to be doing some things this year we ordinarily wouldn't do because we want to make sure that our staff and our students are safe and our students are, and the community are well-served.
Thank you. Thank you. Another question, the, we have, I think Dr. Bernal mentioned, she's working with the Harris County Health. And I'm wondering, could we have some type of agreement with them for our staff, personnel, and Cyfair? That if someone does have symptoms or if they feel that there is a need of a test, that they can get that test without having to wait in line? And, you know, can, can we work out something with our, the size of our district and our collaboration with them already? Could we do something like that for, for our staff?
Dr. Bernal, you may want to come up and answer that. And then I also, and Dr. Henry may want to mention this, even Dr. Oliverson mentioned to Dr. Henry about some possible partnerships to where we can get quick access for that. Dr. Bernal, I'll let you.
With quick results too, Dr.
You took the words right out of my mouth. We are working to find partners that we can send our staff to. I mentioned, the last time I was here, I mentioned the Spring Branch Health, Community Health Center that has a clinic at the Cy Park location, just as an example. And there's some other organizations that have approached us that, that we're looking into. But I, I also like your idea of partnering directly with Harris County Health since they have something set up at Pridgen Stadium, which is really close for us, anywhere in the district. So we could hopefully come to some kind of agreement with them, and I will definitely look into that. Thank you for that suggestion.
All right. Thank you. One last question, Mr. Zepeda. Dealing with our athletic, as we've seen in the, in baseball at least, that there's been some outbreak on some teams. What will we do once we get going under, or is that under UIL? Or do we have a special thing if there are a couple of, let's say, football players or coaches?
There's a, that's a, that's a, that's a big question that requires a lot of answers. I think first you have to start with mitigation, and I think that we've done that. You know, someone had asked earlier, have, have we been bringing in health organizations to partner with us and cooperate with us to, to vet our plans and to give us advice? And I don't know whether you know this or not, but we, we've partnered with Memorial Hermann, Methodist Hospital, and HCA to provide a third athletic trainer at each of our high schools. And so when we were coming up with a mitigation and operational plan for the summer, we reviewed that plan with, with those partners to get their advice and their opinion. And, and they've kind of signed off on that as best they can. So I think it starts with developing a great plan to try to, to keep that from happening. The other thing that we've been stressing, and I had a meeting with our athletic coordinators today, and I guess I would say to everybody, is, you know, we're all accountable for each other. And so one of the things that we're trying to do as we work with our kids is to explain to them, if this is something that's truly important to them, that what they do away from us is almost more important than what they do with us. So we're really trying to, to educate them in that manner because if they really want to have successful seasons in school years, as some of the students have passionately explained, there needs to be a change in their personal behavior at times. So we're hitting that as well. And then invariably, and Dr. Henry has said this, I've heard him at the board meeting, you know, we're, we're a reflection of the society around us. And we've heard many people tonight say, there are, there are going to be positive cases here. I mean, it's going to happen. And we've had that. But one of the things that I do feel good about, because of the mitigation efforts, because of the operational efforts, because of the, the efforts of Ms. Dr. Bernal and her team, and, and really the close communication with that group and the access that we have, we're able to respond quickly, limit it, contact, contact trace back, and minimize the exposure to other people. So I would hope that we don't ever get to that situation, Dr. Ogletree. But I think we have to be prepared for all contingencies during this time.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Ryan.
You know, it's a, it's, it's a great report, and I really do applaud our leadership. You know, I started when I was listening to this, I started thinking back to March 3rd and the seniors we had last year, Julie's daughter, Marnie's daughter, Debbie's granddaughter. And their years were just abruptly come to a halt, you know, screeching halt. And I think our goal collectively, and I'm not speaking for everybody, is to at least give every student in our district the opportunity to succeed. And if, if for those families it means being on campus, then I want to give them that opportunity to be on campus. I want those seniors to have the experiences that they, you know, that they desire to have. And for some, it's going to be that they're going to want to stay home. And so, you know, we've, well, not really me, but the administration has been extremely smart in, in kind of staying back and, and just waiting to see what happens. And if you look at the timeline that Teresa gave us, if, if this doesn't tell you anything, in 11 days from July 20th to July 31st, it was a complete cluster. This thing has gotten political, is what it is for, for a large part. And as a board collectively, we're, we're not political. We, we just want to make decisions, and, and it's a daunting task for, for seven people and superintendent, but we want to make decisions that are in the best interest of all of our students, all of our employees, and all of our taxpayers. And, and that's, that's, that's kind of what we're faced with. And I think up to this point, that, that you guys have. I mean, since March 3rd, our employees haven't missed a paycheck that I'm aware of. And I don't know how much money have we paid from March 3rd? It's got to be in the millions of dollars.
Monthly payroll is 77 million, so just do 77 million times five.
And so I think that's a great reflection of, number one, we're good financial stewards of our taxpayers' money that we're able to do that. But number two, that we do care about the employees. One, and I didn't, I didn't mean to get on a soapbox, but I mean, clearly, this thing's going back and forth. You, you hit the nail on the head when you said flexibility. It's, it'll probably change tomorrow, by the 10 o'clock news. If we're home by then, it might change by then. I mean, it's nuts. But I, you know, I just think if we remain flexible, that, that we're going to be okay. One thing I do have a question about, and I kind of, I think probably all of us kind of saw this coming, and, and that's with the technology. You might want to start heading up. Is, it, no, no. If you just think about, not just Cyfair, Houston, Dallas, Texas, but nationally, the number of school districts that want a laptop. That it's hu, I mean, it's, it's, it's kind of unfathomable. Is there, did we consider, and I don't even know, Marnie, if it's legal, but Lenovo, obviously, I thought that might be delayed. I mean, it's just natural. But to where we can use multiple vendors to try to speed it up? Or if we have, I, I'm, I'm a little worried that we're going to get to September, and they're going to go, hey, that thing with China didn't work out like we thought it would. So we're going, October, you're looking at technology. Is there a way for us to, or have you all thought about?
We did consider multiple vendors. We looked at specific device specifications, and it looked like the Lenovo devices met all of our specifications, or touchscreen and different criteria that curriculum was interested in. So we did, we did consider, but we landed with our existing vendor, with Lenovo.
Right. I got, I got that.
Right.
I'm just curious if you've got Lenovo, and then you've got XYZ over here that, that might have had all the same features. I don't know if they did or didn't.
It's our understanding that the same China sanctions that took place are affecting other vendors as well. The same vendors that responded to our specification.
Got it. That answered that question. Thank you very much. And so, yeah, China. And then the other deal, kudos to our food service department. I mean, if that doesn't give you chills, the fact that we have fed so many people this summer for free is amazing. You know, it's, it, it just, it really makes me proud of what we do in the district. And the fact that we're going to continue that is, is just phenomenal to me. So that's all I got.
And, and since you said that, Mr. Ryan, Darren, Darren, head of all of our student nutrition is in the back there, so let's give Darren a round of applause.
Thank you, Don. Very insightful. So surprising.
Ms. Blackshire.
Thank you. Teresa, I just want to commend you and all the people who have put together our return to school plan, our lead safety plan. Last couple of weeks ago, the presentation just hit it out of the ballpark, and tonight again. And, you know, there's just, as we learn more information, more questions come to mind. And, you know, I, I know if any of us had a crystal ball, we'd have all the answers. But unfortunately, we are not unique to the pandemic. And we, like every other school district in this county, state, and country, are trying to make the best decisions based on the information that's provided to us. So thank you for the work of all of administration, all of our departments. I echo what Mr. Ryan said about Mr. Crawford. And the, every time I, I see on social media how many students we're reaching and feeding, it just makes my heart swell with pride that these kids are not going hungry and their families. I do have a few questions, and they're kind of, I was just jotting them down as the presentations progress, so they, they're kind of jump around, so bear with me. A question, and it's something that I've, I guess I'd say a concern I've seen on social media, if we want to call it that. But will, for the students that are in person, will all of their coursework be done online? Or will they, because what I've heard, the concern is, from some parents, is their children will be looking at a computer screen all day, which while I can appreciate their concern, I know just based on my grandkids, that's where my grandkids' faces have been, you know, all summer, is on a screen, playing a game or watching something. But will, for the students that are in person, how will their coursework be submitted? Will it be online, or will they have papers, or how will that be handled?
And Dr. Macias, I think, is going to provide much detail on this when she gives her presentation. If you want to answer the question, you're more than welcome to.
Well, if it's going to, is it going to be handled later? Did that, Mike?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, then we'll wait on that. Is T E A covering all of our PPE costs? Are they either sending us equipment? Are there, are they asking what we need? And we give them our needs and they send it to us? Or are we purchasing it ourselves, paying for it, and they're going to reimburse us?
There's several questions there. The first one is no. They are not providing all the PPE. They have provided, they said that what they were going to send was 70% adult, 30% child, especially on the masks. We received the 70% of the adult masks. We have not received any child masks. So we are sourcing and procuring most, well, not most, a lot of the PPE that we will be starting the school with.
Are they providing any face shields for those teachers that want them? Or are we going to bear that cost?
We provide, they provided over 14,000 face shields, which we have shipped to the campuses.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I appreciate that. Okay, this would probably be a question for Dr. Bernal. If we have a student confirmed with COVID, and they have a sibling in a school, it could be in the same school, or it may be, say, a high school student is diagnosed and may have a sibling in, say, an elementary school, are we going to verify that that sibling, once they're confirmed positive, is in quarantine and not indeed in school anyway? How will that be handled?
That's a very good question. As we're developing our contact tracing and notification protocol, that is definitely something we are looking at under the guidance of the Harris County Health Department. I would imagine that we would, if there was close contact, that we would ensure that the student also is in quarantine.
Okay. I would hate to think that a parent would send their student to school if they should be in quarantine, but I'm not so naive as to believe that that may not occur. So thank you for that. I guess, after we went through our graduations, Dr. Henry, and we went through, what, 11, 12?
12.
12. We went through 12 of them. Were there, and I know there was all kind of safety protocol in place, were there any reports that we were made aware of, of any students or guests who may have tested positive for COVID?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. And, and you kind of talked about this while I go, Teresa, about class sizes. I'm wondering, what do the numbers look like for, you know, in that number that we saw that parents responded their kids would be in person? What are the numbers, the breakdown of numbers looking like for elementary, middle, and high school? For example, I'm thinking that there may be more high school students that want to be in person. And, and do we have any idea what that matrix is looking like?
Yes, and I think, I think Ms. Smith provided you with a copy at your place where you can see it broken down by campus.
I haven't had a chance to look at it.
So for elementary, 43.4% of the students have selected CFISD Connect. 32.79 have selected on-campus. High school, we have 40.9% have selected CFISD Connect. 37.1 have selected on-campus. And then for middle school, 44.7% CFISD Connect. 33.1%, 13% have selected on-campus.
Yeah. And what about elementary?
Elementary, elementary was 43.44. Elementary, elementary was 43.44% C F I S D Connect, 32.79% on campus.
Okay, I'm, well, I haven't looked at the report. Okay. I've been actually paying attention. So then, are we going to try to, as best to our ability, limit the number of students in a class? And and I'm wondering what, and and I'm not holding you to this, but I'm just wondering if we, based on those numbers, if we kind of have an idea of what that might look like. Like, I'm, I'm wondering if, say, I'll just start this example. My granddaughter's in in third grade. So could it be that depending on their, her class size, there could be like 15 kids, students in a class, where other years, you know, it would be 20 or more?
You know, I can't give you a number. I can give you one of the principals that is a part of our reopening committee, Dawn Tryon, Keith Elementary, where Mr. Covey's grandchildren attend. She did share that in looking at the preliminary numbers, she felt great about her ability to create social distancing in all of her classrooms. And I think if you look at Keith, I didn't look at that particularly. I think there's a greater percentage of students that selected on campus for that particular campus than they did C F I S D Connect. But again, Ms. Blackshear, that goes back to how we assign teachers to provide instruction, and that is the challenge, and what is going to take some time for our principals to figure out, because they have to balance the request of teachers and which platform they prefer with class sizes that they need to to create, to create a safe environment for the for the teachers and the students. So it's really going to be very individualized. It gets down to an individual grade level, gets down to individual content areas. So we're, that that's what we're going to spend the next few weeks really working on. And again, that'll be changing until August the 25th.
Are we going to strive to leave this in the elementary? Are we going to strive to leave the students in one classroom setting the entire day, and have teachers come to them, or are they going to be moving from class to class?
That's a great question, and I know that that is a strategy that has been shared as one that helps minimize contact and contact, it helps with contact tracing when you keep groups of students together. That's definitely a much easier strategy to implement at the elementary level.
Correct.
And to some degree, you can implement it with success at the middle school level, because they tend to travel, you know, to grade level classes.
Right.
What becomes very complicated and difficult is at the high school level, and so it's less likely.
Yeah, I wouldn't expect that that could be accomplished at the high school level, or even that it would be difficult in the middle school.
It is difficult.
Right.
Because of their elective choices, there, and then that's kind of when you start having different, you know, level one versus on level, and
Right.
Other classes that they may take that are not alike for a group, same group of students.
Right. And just one final comment. I know I I talked to Mark about this earlier this evening, but, you know, our our kind of, well, our theme is still long, y'all, but we are striving for flexibility. And I had a parent contact me that they had ordered P P E equipment for their elementary and high, middle school age child. It's a face shield. It's attached to a cap. When she asked her principals about it, they said, no, they could not wear it because caps were not in the dress code. So I would just request that maybe we consider that if a face shield is attached to a cap, that that be allowed for students this school year, and that we use our flexibility to work with our students and parents in that manner, and because it makes sense. She sent me a picture of it. It, you know, it makes sense, and especially in elementary age, you know, we're, it's going to be a struggle with kids. And if you have a face shield attached to a cap, it may be a lot easier for them to tolerate during the school day. So I would just comment and hope that we can add that flexibility to our to our students. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Mr. Jackson.
As always, good presentation. If we go back to the April, May board meetings, and if you listen closely what Dr. Henry said in response to a question, he stressed that conversations were taking place about teacher, having teachers assigned to different platforms. Those were your words tonight. He said it a little, a little bit differently back then, but I think it's important to know that those conversations have been happening from the very beginning. But I've also been at the front to say we needed to move as slowly as possible, because situations change. And I know a number of my good friends are very frustrated, but but that's okay. You can talk to me about it. I'm the one who who said we needed to move as slowly as possible, and I still think that. A couple of observations that bear repeating. Mark said the virus, another 11 months? At least another 11 months, right? We hope, we would pray it's over in 11. We know it'll be longer. We know virus flu, Dr. Bernal would tell us that flu type A is the old 1918 Spanish flu. So this virus will be with us. Oddly enough, this is my second board meeting today. I I also said on a nonprofit, multi-county nonprofit, a pediatrician was on the board. She made the the point that parents needed to have their highest level of accountability at keeping their children home, because if they send them to school with the temperature, they're potentially endangering not just their child, but every other child in the classroom, and all the teachers. And and she was very passionate about it, and I think it it makes sense to repeat. A third word of caution to repeat, Governor Abbott came out, and he said, hey, folks, flu season will start up in September, right? As if we didn't have enough to worry about. So if you get your flu shot, if that's something you plan to do, it's a good idea to do it. We talked about accommodations. So I mentioned it first with what Mark said back in April, then again in May. As many of you know, I'm a stage four survivor. I am coming up on seven years out. When I went through the process, any number of teachers reached out because they were very worried that they would lose their jobs because they too had cancer. This district went above and beyond to make certain that they had accommodations for all of those teachers at all levels. That included campus administrators, I S C, classroom teachers. And I'm sure that this district will continue that policy as we work through the COVID assignments. But once again, we will work very, very slowly, which is the appropriate approach. Former board member Christine Hartley sent it to me, and I'm sure she sent it to Don and a few others, the meme going around about what do you do when somebody's touching your face mask in elementary school, or somebody's pulling it off your ear? These things will happen. I don't know that we can have hard and fast rules on face mask discipline, but we do need to have patience, and once again, we need a lot of help from parents. Face masks will be there. They will be difficult for the kids to keep on. We just have to do the very best we can. A question I do have, and Teresa, you've already answered this question offline, but I think it's important to ask again. If we take a look at the the graph, we had no selection, 25,955. What is the current default assignment for those 25,000 students for whom no selection was made? And then the second part, we know there's a default. What are we doing to make that number smaller, if anything?
I'll answer the second question first. What we are doing to reduce that number, our campuses will now take those lists and identify the students and families that we've not made contact with, and they'll begin that process of reaching out to them. It's important to them to get that information. They want that. And then when we've exhausted all of those efforts, then we will assume that those students will show up face to face.
Thank you. Even though I knew the answer, I think it was important to to highlight that once again. For Dr. Bernal, she doesn't have to come up. I will indicate that I had been contacted, that I had been exposed to COVID. So I went into the quarantine. I had no symptoms. I took the test. It did take seven days to get the test back. I tested negative, thankfully. So as we try and find testing partners, any amount of speed that we can add to the turnaround is greatly appreciated. I know in my case, seven days being high risk, I still have active cancer, didn't budge the needle at all. But hopefully, we can do a better job for our teachers. A question for Ray Cepeda, we have had students come back for athletics. How many cases of COVID have we had among our students and among our staff during that time period?
I think you have to clarify comeback which time, you know, because we've, we've, we've had a couple of starts and stops.
I would say cumulative.
Yeah, I I would say that we've had less than, we've had about 20 cases district wide, 20 to 30 cases district wide, and most of them recently that we've had, and I think Dr. Bernal would back this up, were cases where kids had not come to campus, but we caught them because they were screening properly, and they contacted their athletic trainer. So it's hard to really quantify as far as made it to campus, because we kind of group them all together. But to answer your question directly, it's been about 20 to 30 cases.
And that's important. So so once again, and Mark touched on this, and of course, my colleague Julie Heinemann did too, we want to know how big is big, what are the metrics? But but that's revealing. So a potential 20 that were stopped at the screening level, and tell me once again, how many students we had that came out for the summer camps for athletics?
We've had about 3,500 participating.
3,500. We stopped 20 from coming out. Kudos to y'all. We won't always be perfect, right?
No, I mean, and and, you know, we've averaged about, you know, two per campus. I'm just saying with the numbers, it hasn't been two at every campus. You know, some that we caught, some that we haven't, but the 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 contact tracing has been aggressive. And I can say with complete honesty to this group and to anyone that's watching, that there has not been students on our campuses involved in athletics that have gotten it while on campus. I can promise you that, because I've seen every investigation form that's been filled out personally by our by our staff and reviewed by Dr. Bernal's team. So I feel very confident about that, at least up to this point. And and I think it has, our whole experience has really given us a lot of good experience that's going to inform our next steps forward as a collective group.
Thank you. Important information, but also kudos to you, your staff, Dr. Bernal, her group. But it will take this type of effort, as Mark said, for the next 11 months.
I think I could work as a contact tracer now, honestly. So if they need an extra one, I think there's a lot of our staff members that could do that.
Thank you, sir. One item that that was not touched on, and this really goes to you, Roy. You're behind me. And I've asked this question before, but I think it, as we approach reopening, it's appropriate to ask it again. It's about air quality. First time I asked this question, I was just coming on the board, and one of our neighboring districts had a mold outbreak on the campus. It neighbors, it borders us. I asked you about the situation. I asked you again fairly intensely after Harvey. And then also, in the April, May, I asked a basic question about the pandemic. What brings it up tonight is the Dallas newspaper ran an article intimating that schools were not in compliance with COVID-19 guidelines as promulgated by the CDC. I did a quick search on the CDC website referencing standards under COVID that talked about wildfires and particulate matter. So here's the question. Are there guidelines for air filtration as it relates to COVID-19? And if so, do you think we're in compliance with those guidelines? If there are no specific guidelines that pertain to the COVID-19 virus, is our filtration system in compliance with promulgated guidelines for schools for the safety of our students and staff?
Mr. Jackson, great questions. I'm going to start with the last one first. Being in the southern region of the United States, we're in a very high humid, humid climate. We have very strict standards by building codes, ashtray, and so forth, for compliance to stay, to make sure we have good quality indoor air quality in our buildings. And the main risk we have is getting mold and mildew as a result of that. So one of the things we do is we pre-treat our outside air as part of our standard. So we bring, we don't bring in raw outside air. We bring humid air in, we pre-treat it, get the humidity out of it as we enter it into the airstream of the system. So because of that, we already have good, strong measures.
Wait, wait, and let me stop you there. One of the guidelines from the CDC is about bringing in outside air.
That's correct.
So you're saying we do, in fact, bring in outside air, but we pre-treat it before we introduce it to the system?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Please continue, sir.
Okay. And with that, there are some guidelines out there. The EPA, as you've heard earlier tonight, has put some guidelines out there. We are currently reviewing those guidelines, but I can safely say that a lot of those guidelines and the recommendations, we're already doing some of that. We are looking at some of the upgrades to our air filtration, and looking at a different filter system to upgrade it, so we can catch more of the particulates in the air out of it. We typically use a MERV eight to about 11 rating. They, most of the recommendations indicate a MERV 13. So we're looking at our systems right now, working with our engineers, to make sure that we can actually use those filters without compromising our indoor air quality of the building and the performance of the system, to make sure we have a very comfortable environment for our students and our staff to do that. We are, one of the things we're looking at operationally right now is we are going to extend the runtimes for our outside air, so we can still run the pre-treatment, so we can have more air changes, and flushing out the buildings more often to do that. That's really where the recommendation of coming in with additional outside air. We want to do it with pre-treated air. We don't want to just open a bunch of windows, not that we can open windows in our buildings. We don't want a bunch of raw outside air that's untreated getting into our building, because that's what will create mold and or mildew problem in our buildings. So we're being very conservative and careful about making sure we work with our engineers as to which systems we can upgrade our si- our filtration system to. The other thing we're looking at doing is as we're we're cleaning and cleaning our condenser coils in all our air handle units, and also sanitizing them, as well as the drain pans, we're doing that on a much more frequent basis as well. And so we've already been taking steps even before this meeting of implementation of good additional indoor air quality measures, so that we can ensure a safe and secure environment for our staff, as well as our students.
Excellent, and thank you for a very thorough answer. Who knows, I may ask that again come Oc- October.
I'll be ready for you.
Thank you, sir. My colleague Debbie Blackshear already touched on this, but but clearly, you know, you always come to us and ask for classroom waivers. This year, that will be different. But have you started having those conversations about class sizes and what may be an uncomfortable class size, or is it a little premature? The numbers just came in, so it takes time to process the numbers and figure out how many students you have in a class. But do you anticipate that we'll be moving in the direction to try and identify what a a comfortable class size is?
That's a great question, Mr. Jackson. Really, what a lot of our campus principals have been doing the last few weeks, they've actually been setting up class- they've actually been setting up classrooms and seeing the number of students they could put in a classroom and create appropriate social distancing. I know a lot of them are using it even for some of their communication to parents and with staff and taking pictures and doing videos. And so it, it really will depend on the size of the classroom. You know, when you ask about class size waivers, it is important to note that class size waiver requirements still apply. We still have to maintain and submit waivers if we are over the 22 to one at K through four. So I don't anticipate that we'll have class sizes over that. But, but again, it's just going to depend, but we're working on that.
Well, it will, it takes time to process the data. We still have a lot of data to come in. You know, maybe 14 in a class is appropriate. Maybe 15 is, maybe 12 is. But until we have the numbers, you can't come back to us. But it's okay for us to know you are thinking about it, you're starting to have those conversations.
Correct.
And I'll go back, you know, I made light of the face mask. But, but I do think that, that will develop particularly on elementary campuses, but, but easily on, on our wonderful middle school campuses with our middle school students. And, and I think our, our campus administration and our teachers may need a little help with that. But the most help's gonna have to come from our parents. Once again, thank you for a wonderful job. This is going to be a long year. It will get, as I said last time, it will be more stressful on y'all. But just breathe deep every day and tomorrow's a new day. Thank you again.
Mr. Sarabia?
Yes, a few questions, but back to Teresa. Outstanding job. You guys hopefully put at ease a lot of the concerns of the teachers here just because they may not have the transparency yet in place. It's an ongoing change like Don and other trustees have all said. It could change from day to day, but they are working on it. And by no means does anybody on this board or anybody in administration want anybody to get sick or any other illnesses due to the pandemic that we're going through right now. So great job, Teresa. And I also want to start off with patience for everybody. Everybody needs to have a lot of patience as this ongoing, ongoing scenario that we're gonna be, be dealing with for months. Teachers, I hear you. They came up here and forced today, and that's their, their, their right. That's their, that's how they feel. They can come up here in droves and, and do their, what they feel, what they need to do. Teachers are the backbone of any school district, everybody knows that. It's not the, it's, it's a coalition between the whole administration and teachers, but teachers are the backbone of any successful school district. And I believe we have some of the best teachers in the whole state here. And that's why we thrive as, as we do now. So we do hear you and we hear your passion and it's not being disregarded by any means. Dr. O, you brought up the question of basically can the teachers that are feeling that they have underlying conditions be held? Tom answered that question when he spoke a little bit, little bit ago, that in prior instances, it has happened before. And hopefully, the administration can see fit to where the teachers that have underlying conditions, depending on the numbers and everything that is taken through effect, can be put at ease. And I, I strongly believe that they can with the numbers that are coming in. The social distancing protocols are gonna be in place. And just give us a chance to show you that we have a, we have a plan. But the plan is ongoing and it's for everyone's benefit. So please just be patient and stuff. So good question, Dr. O, and good answer there, Tom, coming back with it has happened before. The superintendent stated, we have a month. We have another month till we actually get, get there, September 8th. So this is still ongoing. You know, we, we, we see a flattening, maybe, but the, the, the number's high right now. We want to get it going down. People are still doing, doing things that they need to do, though, but we have another month. So continue to, to, to heed the, the warnings and stuff that goes on, but give us a chance. Nobody wants to be put at, at arms in fear of getting sick or anything else. So again, we, we, patience. No one's putting, like Don said, Don said, yes, it has gotten political a little bit and stuff, and he's, he's right. It has. I don't, I try and get on social media just to look at some of the friends and where the posts used to be like 16 comments. Now they're 600. And heaven forbid I comment on it because of where I'm at, and I'm like, oh my God. I can't even do that. And it's a, a time of, you know, either you're with me or you're not, and that shouldn't be the case. I, I think we should all be together. And it's okay to disagree with one another. It doesn't mean that we still can't be friends and stuff, so. Yes, it has gotten political. And my mentor in chief and strong guy over there, Don, has spoken wise words today and stuff. So appreciate Don Ryan.
Yeah, we're gonna have Dr. Bernal work with you, Mrs. Sarabia.
Going back to the COVID, yes, it, it's real. Went to a funeral today, I got one tomorrow, I got one Monday, I've already been to two. So I'm having friends go, go down, lifelong friends go down by the wayside. Now, I, I was a, a ring bearer 53 years ago to a gentleman who was passed with COVID two, two weeks ago. And there was nothing wrong with him besides his age, he just got it. And I went to his funeral and at five years old, 53 years ago, I was his ring bearer. And it was sad, so, but we need to, you know, keep our protocols in place. I have a beautiful wife at home who's texting me and praying that we get the computers in on time. Don was, had brought that up, and hopefully, we have somebody in place there that if this doesn't happen, that we have something here. Cause her words weren't very kind on my texts about the particular company that we're dealing with and stuff and their supply chain issues. So hopefully, we have somebody in place there to come through before September 8th and stuff, so get these passed out. And Don Ryan brought that up, not me, so. Air, air systems, Roy just answered that, I had that over here also. The ratios are going down like Teresa said with the numbers coming in. Deborah, do we, and, and we are getting some retirements, I hear, from various teachers. And it could be ours or other districts. Do, do you see a problem with us hiring, Deborah, or doctor here? Teresa, coming, you know, replacing the teachers who may feel, you know what, it's time for me to just walk away cause I don't feel comfortable.
We've actually looked at our numbers today, and they're not any higher than they, than they would be at any point in the previous year. And so while we have had some employees make some retirement decisions in the last resignation free period, our numbers really aren't looking any different than in the previous year. So those that are making that decision, we are grateful that they did it in the resignation free period so that we have the opportunity to fill those vacancies with other, other teachers coming in. But we are still hiring, but our numbers are still looking the same as they did last year.
Well, thank you very much. I hope they give us a chance, like I said before, before they pull the trigger because we don't want to be losing experienced teachers at this time or because of concerns and stuff. But thank you for answering that. Also, the, Ray had talked about the protocols of getting the kids out there and learning their protocols and stuff. And that's a great plus. I see it too, where I'm at, the kids are social distancing on themselves. But to begin with, a lot of them haven't ventured far away, so it's gonna be a learning process. And again, it's gonna be rough the first few weeks though, until they actually see what we're trying to get down, get through them. We saw a video, we, we heard the Mississippi tales, the Georgia tales, a teacher in Arizona who was sick and did all the protocols and wind up passing away and stuff, and those are just terrible tales. They lead the news, the nightly news, they lead right there, first thing, good morning, America, 7 o'clock, you're, you're hearing about it. There was a student who put on video the hallways, I think it was earlier this week, their first day back. I think in Tennessee, it could have been, I'm not sure where it was at though. But, you know, those are frightening instances that I'm sure that we're still working on and stuff. So hopefully, we can deal with that in a better manner than what's going on in their area and stuff. We also have teachers who may just not agree with us. They just don't agree with us. We're not gonna please everybody, it's not gonna happen, we're, we're not gonna do it. But the teachers or employees that do not feel safe at the time of the, but it's time to get to work. This is where we're at, this is what we're gonna do. Please, hopefully, there's an avenue for them to go to without feeling the retribution because a couple of times we heard today, you know, if you don't like it, retire. Leave, leave, retire, sign your papers in. And hopefully, it's a little bit said better than that. Then, you know, if you don't like it, leave. But hopefully, there's an avenue where they can come through in a safe way and say, you know what? I don't like what we're going through and there's an avenue for me to complain to somebody without feeling any kind of retribution. So I'm hoping that's going on there also throughout the administration and wherever they're at and what school they're at. Was there any staff, other than what we heard Ray, with the athletics and our summer, people that were cleaning the school buildings and everything else? Was there any numbers of them that went down with the COVID? Did we have any numbers on those, Teresa? That worked throughout the summer that, in the different campuses or nutrition services or anything?
Yes, I, I, Dr. Bernal may be able to give more specifics. I don't have the data in front of me, but yes, I mean, we've had staff members that have tested positive. But her team of nurses with her support, they are the ones that are doing the contact tracing and how that's been traced back to where the source was.
Can you briefly explain, just an example of how that went through and what, what was done to, when you received it and to remedy the situation?
Sure, of course. I'll, for example, we had custodians that would fill out the screening tool in the morning before they arrived at work and they did not answer satisfactorily. And then they would notify their supervisor who then would contact us. We would go through the investigation protocol with them and then see when was the last time they have, they were on campus, how close they were. Did they social distance, did they wear a mask? And if we felt that there had been some close contact, we would, of course, contact these people and advise them to quarantine. We would contact operations to have areas decontaminated as necessary. And then we would just follow up with the employee as well as with the close contacts to make sure that they are safe, that they're improving and that they, when they can return to, to work. We would send this information to the employee, the supervisor, as well as to the HR department who then would work with the employee to talk about leave options and, and things like that.
Do, do you know that, did any of them miss any period of time without pay?
That would be a question for the HR department. I'm not involved in that process and I don't want to give you the wrong information, I'm sorry.
That's fine, that's fine, thank you, I believe he should come in. Thank you, doctor.
You're welcome.
Yes, it's just a question that, that any of the, our employees who were affected this summer working, that any of them missed time without pay?
Just want to reiterate, beginning April 1st, we had the Family, Families First Coronavirus Response Act that was put in place. And with that, employees were eligible for up to 10 days of paid leave related to coronavirus. And so we fully implemented that. We had some other provisions in place prior to July 20th, so the answer to your question, from my understanding, no, we have not had an, an employee go without pay due to coronavirus.
Okay, thank you very much. And I know that's just, you're, you're, from what you know right now and everything. So hopefully, nobody holds you to like, well, cheese line because it actually happened or something like that though. But I appreciate your answer.
Thank you.
Yes, and last, I'd like to leave, again, Teresa, great job today and everybody else. You guys are just doing a phenomenal job and I'm very proud. And I will say one thing before we walked in here, to the community and to the employees and stuff. So it was, up to my understanding, some people in the administration, you know, of course, they get emails and this is that and what, and, but sending threats is never something that's acceptable. And I find it just terrible that somebody would send anybody in the administration a threat just for disagreeing on how we're trying to get the job done. So, and the community, I love you guys, but the threats are, are not something that should be taken lightly and please think otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I don't have very many questions. I will, like I said a while ago, this is excellent report and very in-depth. Also know that it's a moving target. And I had one, a couple of questions, but one of them, Paula, do we have any idea how many dead spots we have in our district? I mean, I know that we, we've got the hotspots we send out, but there are certain areas and it's kind of, when I'm talking at Tazby and I'm talking to rural districts and I can't believe there's dead spots in Houston, there really are. So I was curious as to how many, do we have a number or a percentage or what do we have?
We do not, that's the reason we had a dual award. And if we, our initial geographic coverage map from both providers showed 100% coverage, but we have asked for a more detailed by zip code.
Okay, all right, so we're, we're trying to get that, right?
Yes, we are.
I'm, I'm fortunate in that I serve on the Tazby Board and for the past six or five months, we've had a monthly meeting with the Commissioner of Education. And I know that superintendents also have that. Once again, I know him personally, but I don't really agree with him totally. I will say that he made a mention of hold harmless mark, and that has to do with the ADA. Over the next, is it eight or 12 weeks? Can you tell us a little bit about that?
Yes, and Teresa can correct me if I'm wrong. The last I recall being reported, the first 12 weeks
12 weeks, yeah.
of, of school, is that still the, the same, Teresa? Okay, I'm off.
It's, it's eight weeks with in-class instruction and then, or, I'm sorry, for two, six weeks worth. With in-class, no, it's eight weeks with, I'm sorry, I'm saying that wrong. Eight weeks with in-class and then it's longer, it's 12 weeks with asynchronous.
So basically, what the hold harmless is, is if you don't, they're, they're gonna look back at the last three years of your ADA and that's what they're going to be paying against is basically what your average was? Is that correct, did I understand that correctly? Three years, the la, yeah, the last three years on the last, the, the average, okay, all right. Just wanted that to be known.
And, and I would say, Mr. Covey, I, I can't help but believe that the state's not going to come through and extend that a little bit. Because there, there are going to be lots of school districts that are, are not going to be able to make their payroll. Thankfully, we're in good financial shape, but there's gonna be many that struggle if they don't extend some grace for this whole school here.
And I would basi, basically just like to say to the teachers in the community that we're doing everything we can to make sure that, number one, education is priority and safety, as was said earlier, is right equal and safety, as was said earlier, is right equal to it. I think it's amazing to see there is so much flexibility on the people that are telling us what to do, and therefore, we're having to be flexible on what we're going to do. So please, don't think that we're sitting here and we're not considering you, we're not considering the teachers, or any of the support staff. And we certainly are teaching, are supporting our parents and our students and our taxpayers. So we're trying to take all of that into consideration. And what I am very proud of is this board has asked some amazingly in-depth questions, and I'm very proud of each and every one of you. And now, as President, we're going to take a five-minute break, I don't care how late it is, because I need it. Okay, now, we will proceed with the consensus action items portion of the agenda. 6A, the board will consider approving the minutes of the June 16th, 2020 regular board meeting. Anyone have any comments or suggestions or editorial changes? Okay, 6B, the board will consider approving the minutes of July 7th, 2020 special call board meeting. Anyone have any editorial suggestions? 6C, the board will consider approving the minutes of the July 21st, 2020 special call board meeting. Any changes to that? Okay, the board will proceed with the non-consensus action items portion of the agenda. 7A, the board will consider approving board members to serve as delegate and alternate delegate to the 2020 Texas Association of School Boards Tasby Annual Delegate Assembly, which, if you don't know already, will be handled virtually. So.
Bob, I'm willing to stand down on this and let some other people serve in this capacity. I'm a giver, I'm a giver.
We already, yes, right.
Okay. We already did it. So we will move that to consent. Oh, Lord. 7B, the Lord will cons, the Lord. Honestly, yes, it's about time I sang my prayers, I'm just going to say. The board will consider the endorsement of candidacy of Darlene Bro, Paige Rander, position A, Anne Sung, position D, and Rose Avalos, position H, for the Tasby Board of Directors representing Region 4. These people will be voted on at the virtual meeting. I would tell you that no one's running against Anne Sung, but she's from the large district of HISD. And Rose Avalos has served for quite a long time. And so, they're both have no one against them. I don't know Darlene Bro as well as I do Paige Rander. And I will tell you that Paige is an awesome board member down in Clear Lake. And actually, about four years ago, Paige had an opponent, Charles Cunningham, who actually beat her on the floor and won the position, and so she didn't get it at that time. And she has been serving on the Legislative Committee since then. So, it's my opinion that Paige is probably the best choice, even though I'm sure Darlene's wonderful.
May I speak to Darlene?
Sure.
I do know her and have known her a number of years. She is, of course, on the ALIF board, and she is very active and instrumental in that, in that district. She also works for Head Start. I mean, just a superlative person in the community. And I'm really a rock in ALIF.
Then I think that this ought to stand by itself Monday night when we make the vote. Okay? All right, that'll stand alone. 7C, the board will consider adopting a resolution condemning racism and affirming the district's commitment of opportunity for all. Because it's as late as it is this evening, I would like for John to read the resolution. And then, Monday evening, we're going to have discussion on it, okay? John, would you read it?
I'm going to read it, Mr. President, but I do, I'm just talking with Morni on the break. Just need to suggest a minor correction toward the end, toward, it says now, therefore, be it resolved. That should be in the, in the paragraph after the two words systematic oppression. Okay?
I want you to read it that way, go ahead, John.
All right, okay. All right, and I, before I read it, I want to thank Julie and Gilbert, we, for their collaboration work on this, this resolution. You appointed us, and we put this thing together. Resolution condemning racism and affirming the district's commitment of opportunity for all. Whereas the Board of Trustees of the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District, the third largest school district in the state of Texas, deem it necessary for the respect and dignity of our employees, students, parents, business partners, and community to promote the tenet prescribed in the Declaration of Independence, being all men are created equal. Whereas recent events in our country have brought to the forefront the disturbing issues of racism, systematic racism, discrimination, injustice, and inequality. These issues go against the motto of our district, opportunity for all. It is our desire that this motto become ingrained in our culture and behavior, so much so that CFISD is a district that does not tolerate racism. Whereas it has been 56 years since the Civil Rights Act of 1964, whereas racism, systematic racism, discrimination, prejudice, injustice, and inequality continue to exist and are antithetical to what CFISD strives to be. Whereas we have an obligation to help shape the lives of our students toward a better America free of racism and systematic oppression. And this is where I suggest that we now say, now, therefore, be it resolved, that we lead through policy and practice to eliminate racism, systematic racism, discrimination, injustice, and equality in any and all forms. And we desire all schools to be no place for hate schools, as well as require the study of and celebration of history of all races, ethnic groups, genders, and differences. We resolve to engage an outside, an outside entity to conduct an equity audit that will lead us to develop an equity policy or policies, so we can better strive to close the gaps of opportunity and achievement among ethnic groups, races, genders, and those of low socioeconomic status and learning differences. We resolve, further, we resolve that we encourage our district to be a place for transparent dialogue among our board, staff, school personnel, students, and parents on the issue of race and racism, and there be no retribution for individuals or groups for sharing what is perceived, believed, or experienced. In unity and agreement, we vote in affirmation and sign this resolution to be part of our permanent record as a board. And it has a date, and then has a place for the signature of all of our board members.
Thank you, John, y'all did a wonderful job. And I'm not minimalizing how important this is to us and to our district. But I do want us to have an opportunity to discuss and open the discussion between the board before we sign it. And my goal is that we do sign it on Monday evening, even though I know Don Ryan is going to be out of the, out of the area. The rest of us will, and then, when Mr. Ryan returns in September, then we'll have a special signing by him.
Thanks, Bob. And I do want to publicly state, John and Julie and Gilbert, thank you all for doing this, and I'm in complete support of this. I regret that I missed the discussion Monday, but I'm behind this team 100%, and I'll sign it in September.
Thank you, sir, I'd like to keep that by itself, is that all right with everybody? Okay, so that'll stand alone. 7D, the board will consider approving on dual reading additions, revisions, or deletions to district policies. FFH Local Student Welfare Freedom from Discrimination, Harassment, or Retaliation, revise. Can we move that to consent? Okay?
And Bob, if you have any questions about that, that's a change in federal law. Title IX regulations came out in May, we had to have it adopted by August the 14th. And if I hadn't hired Harry to, really, he and my law clerk, they, he just did every underlined change and all that, that was Harry. So I'd be curled up in the fetal position if I'd been having to do all the reopening stuff and incorporate all the new federal laws regarding this policy. So if you have any questions, I'm going to have to defer it to my better half, Harry.
Does anybody have any questions for Harry, who is much better at this than cleaning the microphones? Is that okay? Can we move that to consent, is that okay? All right, we'll move to consent. The board will consider a request for the TEA Parent Notice Requirements for Students at Risk Failure Waiver. Are there any questions for Dr. Macias on this? Can we move that to consent? Okay. 7F, the board will consider a request by TEA Reading Diagnostic Instrument Waiver. Anyone have any questions for Dr. Macias? Can we move this to consent? Thank you. 7G, the board will consider approving the attached list of facilities for off-campus physical education, category one, for 2020, 2021 school year. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Bourne? Loretta, are you here? I didn't see her. If not, I'm sure Linda can do it, yes. Anyone have any questions? Okay, can we move that to consent? Thank you. 7H, the board will consider approving the CISD Connect Oh, Lord. Asynchronous plan as the remote option of the 2020, 2021 school year. Dr. Macias.
Good evening, President Kovey, board members, and Dr. Hendry. This evening, I will be sharing with you the proposed plan for remote instruction for the 2020, 2021 school year, as required by the Texas Education Agency. The TEA requires that we bring the plan to you, and that you make a decision whether to approve it or not. And if you approve it, then we will submit it to them, and then they will do a final approval. And it also requires that we post this on the website for our community. The Texas Education Agency, the Texas Education Agency identified two types of virtual models that are, of instruction that districts could choose for remote instruction, and that would continue to yield state funding. The plan we will be presenting to you this evening, if approved by you, is an asynchronous plan. And we have branded it CFISD Connect, as you can see up on the, on the screen. CFISD Connect combines two-way, real-time, virtual instruction between students and teachers, along with teacher-directed independent lessons and activities. So teachers will connect with students to provide instruction daily. The teacher-directed independent lessons and activities will not require for the teacher and students to be connected there for these activities to occur. The instruction may include various forms of digital and online learning, such as pre-recorded lessons and game-based learning that students completed on their own, along with the live teacher-directed lessons. Daily attendance is recorded, but the asynchronous model, the CFISD Connect model, allows for flexibility in earning credit for attendance, I'll talk about that just a little bit. So and then importantly, the, the, the remote model does require that we teach all of the state standards, so all of the texts. Next slide, please. The CFISD Connect model, as I said, will feature two-way live teaching instruction in various ways, combined with the typical variety of independent activities that you see in our classrooms. So again, the students, the students will participate in a positive classroom experience with live teaching combined with these, with these independent learning opportunities. You can see on the slide, on the left side, that live teaching may be in the form of a lesson, a mini lesson, possibly a demonstration, possibly small group instruction, or read aloud, just to name a few. So it's the great teaching, again, that we see in the classroom, delivered by our awesome teachers. We all know that our teachers are the key to our students being successful. Our students will also be provided, as I said, the opportunities to engage in independent self-paced activities, along with direct teacher interaction. You see on the right, a sampling of these activities. And again, most of these activities are activities that happen in the classroom. But in the CFISD Connect Remote Learning, students will be doing these activities at home, at their own pace. Daily engagement can be, can be determined really by any of these activities. But in this plan, and in the, in the guidance by the state, daily engagement really pertains to attendance. And again, it may be captured in any form that you see up here. Next slide, please. But regardless of the instructional modality that parents choose, and Ms. Black, so you kind of asked a question about this. So regardless of the modality the parents choose, on-campus instruction or Connect CFISD instruction, the focus will be on student learning. So in-person classroom instruction provides high-quality educational experiences, and the CFISD Connect Remote Learning must also provide the same type of experience. That is actually a requirement from the TEA for remote learning. So as you see up here, the expectation, whether you're online, or whether you're face-to-face, is the same quality engaging instruction. We have a common curriculum, common assessments, all of that is the same, and will be the same whether you are a CFISD Connect student, or whether you will be online. District assessments, classroom assessments, again, will be the same, whether you're online or whether, whether you're face-to-face. Grading guidelines, the state has been very specific, that the grading guidelines must be what's in policy, whether you're a CFISD Connect student, or whether you are a face-to-face student. Attendance requirements are also the same for whichever modality is chosen. And in fact, the compulsory attendance laws are in effect. And because we believe we're going to have students who may transition from on-campus instruction to CFISD Connect, or vice versa, it is critical that we have a plan that will provide a seamless transition where they will not be missing any instruction. Next slide, please. So the TEA application format for districts to submit the remote plan, as I said, for approval, has four specific requirements. Instructional schedule, a material, material design, student progress, and implementation. So let's look at each of these key areas that are required, and how we are addressing these with CFISD Connect. So the first requirement, the instructional schedule. So, next slide, please. So you see here some key points for, for this area. School districts must provide a schedule which details teacher interaction or direct instruction with students, a schedule that is predictable, planned, clearly defined, and published, as I said. We've got to have that all, all that on the website. The time and content need to be roughly equivalent to on-campus day. It was shared with us over and over again that the instruction needs to mirror each other, whether it's face-to-face or on-campus. Direct work with academic content must match or exceed the average daily minimums, minimums across Direct, uh, direct work with academic content must match or exceed the average daily minimums, minimums across all subjects. So our C F I S D Connect schedules are very much equivalent to on-campus day and, uh, and what students will receive in direct instruction. Special ed students and English language learners will be supported by their teachers with the accommodations and modifications that they require. Now before I share with you some sample schedules, uh, I want to talk to you a little bit about the instruct, the possible instructional arrangements. So T E A did provide us some guid, some guidance for how students may be grouped. In pre-K through first, the instructional arrangements that are, that, that are available to our, or we're making available to our, um, campuses are either teachers have an entire class of face-to-face students or teachers are teaching remote students. The state was very clear that within the primary grades, they want to make sure that students have ample time away from the, from the, uh, computer screen. That was, that was, uh, uh, one of the requirements in there. So these are the two options that we've talked to our principals about for pre-K, K, and first grade. In second through 12th grade, our campus leaders have three options for the classroom instructional arrangements. One, a classroom may have, again, all, uh, on-campus students or a classroom may have all Connect, uh, remote learners, C F I S D Connect remote learners, or a classroom may have a combination of both on-campus and some C F I S D Connect learners. And I think Ms. Hall has, uh, said several times that until our campuses are able to go through all the data, uh, regarding choices, uh, they don't, they can't really develop an appropriate plan about what the arrangements will look like, either for the entire school or by grade level or by, or by, uh, by different teams. And some of the things that they need to consider, just to make it a little more complicated, are teacher certification areas. Class size that we spoke about, special populations. All of these have to be considered as they're looking at not just the numbers, but, but what the classes will, um, also, also look like. It's also important to note, and we've shared this with, uh, with, uh, principals, that if, if teachers are identified as only being, or only teaching remote learners or teachers identified as only teaching online students, that could change. That could change. Because at the end of a reporting period, our, we may have C F I S D Connect students who choose to come to the school for instruction. And in fact, I've visited now with many parents have actually shared that. And so if we have a number of C F I S D Connect students who want to come back to the campus, somebody has to teach, somebody, somebody has to have them in, in their classrooms. So it's possible that some, some teachers who may have been identified as C F I S D Connect teachers may have to be, uh, may have to teach the kids who are on campus because the numbers will reflect that. Or it's possible that maybe there's a change in, in, uh, in the, in the virus activity. And so parents decide that they want to have their kids transition from on-campus to remote. And so if there is enough students, then the same thing happens. We might have to have some teachers who were, uh, on-campus only student teachers, teaching students, that turn into remote teachers. And I've shared before that, uh, we've worked to train all of our teachers on remote learning because at any time, all of our students could be remote learning in a remote situation if the, the, uh, the, the entire district, for example, ends up being closed for a few days or a campus, then everybody would, would, uh, uh, turn into a remote learner for that time period. So here's an example of a pre-K through first grade schedule. I want to stress the word sample. The, the plan that we have to submit is one plan. That's all they want, one plan. And then we can submit some samples based on levels. So again, I want to stress that this is a sample. So please note that in the red is a two-way, real-time, virtual instruction with our teachers. The state actually states in the asynchronous guidance, it calls for teacher interaction and direct instruction. That's what you see in the red. The blue designates a teacher direct, uh, teacher-directed, independent work. So this is a work that teachers have, have provided the direction, but they're doing on their own. The stars that you see denote pre-recorded lessons or, um, or video instruction that teachers might provide as part of their independent work. So these sample schedules that I'm sharing are actually, uh, included in the, uh, reopening C F I S D plan that, that we just finished talking about. So you might say, I've seen these, they're, they're similar. Um, again, these are sample schedules. The principals may, may rearrange some of the sections. So for example, possibly they may have, you see on their large group from 115 to 205, it's possible that they may have large group first thing in the morning. So they would take that chunk and move it to first thing in the morning. Now. I have had several questions about, there's no recess on here. Okay? So the state has been very clear that recess is not counted as part of the time for, for, uh, for the remote learning. However, as the campuses take this and create their schedules, they may plug in a time for recess. That, that, that's optional. But even if the campus does not plug in a time for recess, the parent may decide, you know, I want to have recess from 1:00 to 1:15. That's about when my child needs a break. So instead of doing the, the science inquiry at 1:00 to 1:15, the parent may plug in 15 minutes of recess there and then may do the science inquiry at the end of the day from 3:00 to 3:15. So that's the flexibility with, with the independent, um, teacher-directed work where it's more gauged to, to what the need is. If you look at the second through fifth grade, you follow the same, the same format. The red is, is the, um, real, real-time, teacher-directed lessons and, and, uh, and interaction. And the blue, again, are the teacher-directed, uh, independent activities. You see some stars there as well, which again denote some recorded lessons, directions for the independent activities. And then if you see the high school, there are so many courses, as you know, in high school. So we had to do a general, uh, sample to provide to, to the state. But basically you see that for every period, every course, you have some red and some blue. You have some real-time, teacher-directed, uh, lessons and, and then you also have some, uh, teacher-directed, uh, independent work. And then what we put on the right side is just, just some samplings of other types of teacher-directed, independent activities that, that, uh, the teachers may embed into their schedule. And again, our students are doing them at, either during, during that time or at some time because they have that opportunity with, with the, uh, independent work. So. Where am I at? So let's look at the first, uh, component of the requirement. Remember I said there were four areas that are required for the plan? And so the first one is material design. And so if you look at this, you see that they, we want to make sure that there's material that's adapted for virtual instruction, um, that there's a sequence. We want to make sure that it's fitting the needs of all of our students, including English language learners. That, those, those are words from, from the guidance, uh, from the state. And as you know, we provide, uh, teachers with a text-aligned curriculum. As I mentioned, we have a, a, a district scope and sequence and we have our curriculum also. And both, both of those two areas have been adjusted to address the learning gaps that occurred in the spring. The instructional, uh, materials are in the process of being redesigned to capitalize on the interactive features available through Schoology. We're so grateful that you approved Schoology. We've, we've been able to provide, uh, a lot of support and it's gonna, it's gonna provide, allow us to provide quality instruction for our students. So we're gonna be able to provide a robust learning experience for C F I S D Connect students. Amongst the training that we've provided, our curriculum and instruction team and campus instructional teams received six hours of hands-on professional development on creating interactive material and lessons in Schoology to support this work. So all of these resources, the lessons and the materials, are all available for teachers spread at their fingertips through Schoology. As you saw in the sample schedules, there are also tutoring opportunities. I hope you, you, you saw the, the closing, the gap time, that 30 minutes that we've talked about. Even in our Connect, uh, in our C F I S D Connect, uh, model, that is also an expectation. English la, English language learners, as I mentioned, will be supported by their teachers through differentiated instruction and accommodations based on a student's language proficiency level. And our special education students and other students receiving specialized services will also have opportunities for differentiated instruction and accommodations and modifications as identified in their plans. In fact, our special ed team has already reached out to the campuses to, to talk to them about if there are any parents that are having any concerns or have questions, they will be there to support. The third requirement is student progress. So we're required to adhere to the same grading guidelines that we have in policy for C F I S D, uh, Connect students and on-campus students. So both instructional groups will receive regular feedback from their teachers on an ongoing basis. The flexibility to earn daily attendance is through this daily student engagement. And so I want to go through those just, just real quickly. So a student may be considered present if he or she is logged, uh, into, into Schoology or, or, or through, uh, Zoom, whatever form the teacher is, is guiding through Schoology. If the student is logged in, uh, that is considered the interaction with the teacher. And so the student, basically the question is, is the student there? Just like in the classroom, is the student there? It's the, it's the attendance piece. Another way that, that attendance can be taken is, is, uh, is, is the student working in the learning management system. In our case, it's Schoology. But we can also look at other platforms like Read 180 or Achieve 3000 that we also have in place. And then the third way that we can, we can consider for attendance is did the student complete and submit assignments planned for that day? Everything here is on that day. It's daily. It's daily. All of these have to be daily. So, so with the daily, uh, the daily, uh, engagement, as I said, it's more about student attendance and not as much as student achievement. So if you'll go to the next slide. So the final slide, uh, required for the component is implementation. So when, in this section, it talks about teacher supports and family supports. So let's first look at the teacher supports. So you can see here that basically with the teacher supports, they're talking about professional development for teachers. They're talking about training on remote, uh, uh, remote teaching and learning and on, and also using the learning management system, which as you know, is Schoology. Next slide, please. So our teachers participated in the initial Schoology training in May. You may recall that because we wanted to pilot it for summer school and that's, that's what we did. New teachers, uh, newly hired will be able to complete the training as they join C F I S D. So our summer, our summer school with Schoology was very successful. We had many emails from teachers talking about, uh, how user-friendly it was and how they were really able to provide great instruction. Um, and we had parents who were also sharing praises about the system and how their kids were getting real live instruction as well. Seventy-three, one-hour, on-demand, virtual sessions focused on helping teachers in an asynchronous model were provided over the summer. And, and, uh, sessions such as making classrooms more digital, capture and share lessons with PowerPoint Recorder, uh, strategies for teaching remotely, um, interactive word walls, teaching remotely. Those are just some examples of some of the sessions that were provided for teachers. This year, the, the Digital Learning Conference was held last week. And there were over, I believe, 6,500 teachers that participated. The focus for the, for the Digital Learning Conference was remote learning and Schoology. Student achievement. Those, that was the focus for the, for the, um, for the Digital Learning Conference. Now, the week of August 17th, teachers will participate in 30 hours of professional development. Everything that we've done as far as P D, professional development, has been done remotely. So the week of the 17th is no different. It'll be remote instruction. And this is a, a draft schedule of what the week is going to, to look like. So throughout the week, teachers will experience on-demand videos as part of their, their, uh, professional development. They'll experience live content delivered through Schoology, those virtual live lessons. Basically, what we're hoping to accomplish is the, the ability to, to model for our teachers the expectation for the C F I S D asynchronous plan, which again is a combination of real-life instruction with also independent, uh, activities. So the sessions, uh, will include the content and adjustments to the scope and sequence that, that we've worked on to help bridge those gaps. The curriculum and instruction team has developed six weeks of interactive lesson materials in Schoology and they're organized daily for every single content for teachers, every single course for teachers to include as they build their own instructional lesson. So that's a resource there for, uh, for teachers. Um, as I mentioned, it includes, uh, courses, sessions on Schoology. And if you look on Thursday, you can see that that day is focused on social, emotional learning and trauma-informed teach, uh, teaching. We know that our students have been through a lot as well. So we want to make sure that we're providing that support for our teachers. We also, if you look at the bottom, I think it's on Monday, look at the bottom, you'll see, uh, uh, I believe it says creating offline toolkits. We've also, we're also preparing for what if the internet goes down? What if the internet goes down? Cause that happens, right? And so we are gonna have a toolkit for every content area, every subject for students. So if the, so if the internet goes down, the student knows, I just need to go and pull my, my toolkit for English one or for, you know, eighth grade science. And there'll be activities that the teachers have already assigned that teach, that students can do. So the day is not lost and we will count them as present as well, as long as, as they're working on those activities. And then you see team planning. Every, every year with our professional development, uh, P D week, we always make time for team planning so our teachers can, can talk about the learning that they've had and then how they might work it into, into their, um, lesson plans as school begins. And then finally, let's take a quick look at the implementation requirement as it relates to families. So parents will receive routine communications through our C F I S D website. As I mentioned, the LEAD Sa- Safely Plan, um, that's on our website, includes some of this information that I'm, I'm sharing with you today. A C F I S D Connect webpage is now live and will serve as a hub for information to support C F I S D Connect, uh, Connect students. So if you can go to the, to the website, please. So right here on the website, if you go, if you go to parents and students, you'll see the very first item there is C F I S D Connect. So if you click there, and can you scroll down a little bit, Joel? You can see C F I S D Schoology. And stop there for just a second. So in C F I S D Schoology, there are all how-to videos that are available for parents and we're adding to them. So they'll find things like, uh, you know, how, how-to videos like how to support remote learning, uh, tips for establishing a successful remote, remote learning environment. Some of most social, emotional supports, um, information for them. So there's all these different how-to videos to, to help our students be successful in, in, uh, C F I S D Connect. The team, keep going down. So you can kind of see the social, emotional there. Uh, you can see, uh, there's even information there for our deaf education and, and visually impaired students. So a lot of information at, right at the fingertip for our parents, for our parents as well, all in one. as well, all in one place, all in one place. Go back up to the video. Our team has also worked on videos to kind of help parents just kind of understand a little bit more what, uh, the remote learning may look like. This particular teacher actually, uh, is one of our Latin teachers, and she taught Latin last year. And it just so happened that in her class, she had face-to-face students and she had some students that, that, that joined remotely. Remember, I've shared that we've actually done some of this, even as I gave the example of geometry in, in middle school where students joined a, a geometry high school class for their instruction. So, that's what, that's kind of the same concept with teachers. So, we've, we've asked if we could videotape her, she could share her experiences. Go ahead, Joel.
Hello, my name is Madison Meyer. I'm the Latin teacher here at Cypress Falls High School. During the twenty nineteen, twenty-twenty school year, I had the opportunity to teach face-to-face in person and virtually online. I'm here today to tell you a little bit about what I learned and my experiences throughout that school year. Typically, each day I would start with vocabulary, so I would open up PowerPoint, share our vocabulary PowerPoint, and then through Zoom, I would share that screen with my distance kids so they could see it on their computer, and then my kids in class could see it on the Promethean board. From there, our days differed depending on what we were doing. If we were reading a story, I would project the story online. If we were taking notes, I would post Google Docs on their classroom that they would open up, and then together, we would go through the notes. The breakout rooms I utilized for group work, mostly I had the distance students grouped together and do work that way, and then the kids in class worked together. If we had like a group project, um, that's how they would do it. The breakout rooms, I was able to pop in and make sure that students were interacting and actually staying on task through Zoom. If they're in class, I could still kind of walk around when opportunities presented themselves. Having a routine, something that they know as soon as they come in or sign in, they have to do something. So, whether it's like a warm-up or a quick little introduction, they know what they're supposed to do when they come in. I think communication between parents and students is super critical during this time so that we can be as transparent as possible of what we expect and have the parents help us as much as they can with what their students need to be doing when they're learning from
So, just a little example, a little video of what this may be looking like when you have both Connect students and face-to-face students in your classroom. So, we have an array of videos that the team has been work, uh, working on. Um, got to give a shout-out to, to Leslie's team for all their help. And, uh, they've, we're, we're creating this video so we can not just have online, but maybe also dump them into different social media so that, so that, uh, parents can be seeing them and get a better look, and teachers as well, get a better look at what this might, uh, might look like. I'd like to take a moment to recognize my curriculum instruction accountability team for the non-stop work, late evenings, weekends, they haven't had a, a break. They, they've done an incredible job because they want to ensure that our teachers and our students have what they need for, for the quality rigorous instruction, the Cyfer way, that we want to make sure we have for all of our students. And so, my CIA team is, is led by the following, uh, Assistant Superintendent. So, Barbara Levandowski, Barbara, stand up. Barbara Levandowski, who oversees educational support services. Dr. Tanya Gori, Tanya, stand up. Tanya Gori, who, who oversees school improvement and transformation. Dr. Ashley Claiborne, Ashley, she might be in the other room, who oversees our district accountability and improvement. And our point person for, for our CFISD Connect asynchronous plan has been, uh, Dr. Heather Bergman. So, Heather, stand up. And she oversees all of curriculum and instruction. They truly are the dream team. And all of the, the group, all of the, the staff that's behind them has just done, uh, an incredible job, so I'm very appreciative of them. So, at this time, I will be happy to answer any questions that you may have about the CFISD asynchronous plan that we are proposing to submit to the state.
Thank you very much. We'll start with you. Yes, sir.
Good job there, Linda. I loved your attendance mandate this, this coming fall where the, the kids have to be there when the class is going on and stuff. I, I like that a lot compared to what we're going through in, in the spring, though. Do you know when, if, when the kids are, uh, taking attendance, does their screen have to be on where they visually see them or a blank screen? Sometimes we go into our meetings, we don't see the person, we just see their name on it. Have y'all made a determination, do you have to see the face or is the blank screen with the name on it fine?
So, if you recall, I shared that daily engagement. So, that daily engagement, that's the attendance piece. Can it, can, uh, there's three ways to capture the attendance, so it can be in the face-to-face instructions, so that screen like you're talking about. But it can also be that the student was working in the learning management system in, in Schoology, or it could be that the student submitted a, a daily required assignment for whatever reason they weren't in the face-to-face. Or it could be that the teacher called, which we're encouraging teachers to do, the teacher called and was, would provide some instruction for the students. That's part of that live instruction. So, there's different ways to be able to capture it.
Yeah, when, when they call, though, do they have to have the camera on?
No.
They don't? Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Jackson?
This is a question, uh, that we've chatted about before, Linda, and, and you lightly touched on it, uh, but I was curious as to how far the thinking was going. So, the, the, the predicate, about eight years ago, I had the opportunity to visit with Secretary of Education Page over a meal, and I, I talked to him about when will technology deliver its promise in the educational world? And we talked about what Arizona was doing where they had model teachers in Classroom A that were being filmed for certain lessons, and then in the other classrooms for that lesson, the students saw that on their whiteboard, and then the regular teacher would step in and would take over after that lesson. You do have a model teacher program here in Cyfer that, that you instituted. Do you see that we'll be developing, uh, lessons, really the, the better term is mini lessons, uh, that can be plugged in, uh, to the lessons, uh, across the district or across the, uh, school campus?
Actually, Mr. Jackson, we already do that. We were doing that through, through iExplore. We were able to capture more model teachers teaching different pieces of, of the content or curriculum, and then we, we were able to plug it right, we were able to plug it right into iExplore as a resource. So, we do that. We also have a system called SIBME, and through SIBME, we're also able to, to video teachers. And the campus itself creates, uh, can create a library of all these different instructional resources.
Excellent. Thank you. I often need to hear the same answer at least twice so I can understand what you're telling me. Thank you, Linda, and good job to you and your team. This is tremendous. You know, I made the comment back in, uh, April that this was, uh, we, we have a large battleship here, and I got a little chuckle out of Mark at it, but it takes a lot of time and effort to move that battleship in a brand-new direction, and, and that's exactly what y'all did. So, thank you to you and your team.
Thank you.
Ms. Blacker.
Or maybe three. When you were talking about, you know, classrooms and going from, maybe from in-person to, uh, virtual or virtual to in-person, I thought when we first talked about this, that when parents make their choice, that they were going to be locked into that choice for the grading period unless the student was maybe ill or quarantined or some extenuating circumstances. But listening to you tonight, it sounds like that is no longer the case. Am I correct?
No, you, you would, no. Initially, what you said is, is correct. When parents choose CFISD, uh, Connect, and on the questionnaire right now, it states under that they're committing to a grading period.
Okay.
But at the end of the grading period, we may have a number of parents who choose to go
Right.
to, to school to on-campus, which is what, as I mentioned, I'm hearing as I'm talking to, uh, many of the parents. And so, when that happens, yeah, we may need more face-to-face teachers
Right.
and less CFISD Connect teachers.
Okay, question. Then, for the student, uh, that has selected in-person learning, and say it's Tuesday morning and they wake up and they're not feeling well, they may have a bad headache, or maybe, uh, for whatever reason, mom keeps them home, are they going to be able then to jump into a classroom? Or is that something that would have to be more of a planned thing such as a student's quarantined or, uh, a student, uh, a student's diagnosed or going to be out for, say, three, five days? So, how will that work?
So, I want you to think about right now, uh, a student who is ill.
Okay.
And so, the teacher, the, the, the student informs, or the parent informs, right, the school, the, the teacher, and the teacher provides work for the student.
Okay. Okay, that answers that.
And so, and so depending on the setup of the class, if it, if it is a class with face-to-face and remote, the student could very easily just jump into Schoology and join that, join that, that, uh, that instruction, uh, from home while he's sick, or he could, he could do some of the work that the teacher assigned and, uh, uh, on that day and send it to teacher on that day. So, it's going to depend on the, on the, on the, on the setup, but yes, it's very likely that they could connect to, to CFISD Connect.
Okay. And, um, I totally agree with us taking attendance every class for our virtual students. But one question that comes to my mind, I know, um, in the past, for ADA purposes, at a certain time each class day, we, numbers are, some, attendance numbers are submitted for ADA purposes. So, i- is that still going to be true?
So, we have a time and point when, when we check attendance.
Right.
But we also have to take attendance every single
Absolutely.
period, every single, uh, period.
Right.
And so, our students need to be engaged every one of those
Right.
periods. And then, and then, I don't know that I mentioned this, but, but the ninety percent instructional guideline is back in place. Students have to be, uh, participating in the course for ninety percent of the time.
Right, right. Okay. And my final question kind of goes back to the one I asked earlier. For in-classroom instruction, then, not, initially, not every child will, every student will have a Chromebook furnished by us. So, I'm, I'm kind of drawing the conclusion that in the classroom setting in person, that there will be papers that will have to be graded that the students will turn in?
The, the classroom experience will be very much like it is right now
Okay.
with a safety process and protocols in place. So, that will be determined, uh, at the campus.
Okay.
When every student has their, has their, uh, their tool, there will be some assignments that can be, that can be provided through Schoology. And remember, Schoology wasn't just purchased for, because of the pandemic. Schoology was purchased so we, we could continue moving towards our blended learning instruction
Right.
that happens in the classroom as well.
Right, right. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ryan.
I'm good. I appreciate all the work that y'all did, and in conjunction with technology. I mean, all of y'all combined, uh...
Takes a village.
This is no easy task, and I'm, I'm very impressed with what y'all have done. Thanks.
Dr. Ogletree?
I, I agree. We're, uh, looking forward to, uh, this new, uh, new way to educate, and, uh, so looking forward to it. Uh, one, one question, the video you showed, uh, us of the, um, the Latin teacher, uh, do we have, uh, because that, that is for a parent, right? Not for a student? Is that for a parent?
That, that's actually on our, on our CFISD Connect website, so our parents can view it. But we want to use them for our teachers as well when we work with them, so they can kind of see what the, what this would look like.
So, do we have those type of instructional videos in Spanish?
Um, have we translated that yet? We were, we're, we're, yeah, we're, we're working on doing all the translations, so it probably will be in captions for us to translate something like that in Spanish.
Ms. Hahnemann?
Thank you. Thank you so much for all the excellent information. I think, uh, that really helped, uh, answer some of the questions when people saw on the agenda that there was a, uh, an, an agenda item about asynchronous, um, instruction. There was some questions about what that meant, and so I think you cleared up what the, what that terminology means. It's for the purposes of submitting this plan to TEA and for measuring, um, and creating the greatest flexibility for measuring, um, student engagement, um, uh, moving forward for the school year. Is that correct? Did I say it right?
That's correct.
Okay, good. Phew. Um, uh, what I've heard from parents are some questions, uh, you know, everyone wants to know how it affects them personally and their kiddo. Um, the questions have come up about if their, uh, student starts off in-person with the classroom teacher and then goes home to CFISD Connect, would they have the same teacher? What I heard was maybe, maybe not. It depends on how those teachers are assigned based upon the number of students that are going to be in class or at home. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so it depends?
It, it depends. If it's, if it's a combination class, yes. If it's just a, just, you know, completely, uh, face-to-face or remote, then possibly no.
And it may depend on the subject matter, too. If we have one specific CTE course that's taught by one particular teacher, then obviously that teacher would stay the same
That is correct.
because that's the only teacher that provides that type of instruction. But if it's English One, we may have multiple teachers who can provide that instruction.
So, that's a perfect example why, why, why it's so complicated.
Right, right. So, that, again, they need to be flexible and to understand. Um, uh, I think, uh, cross-training the teachers to do either, uh, CFISD Connect educate, uh, teaching, obviously in classroom teaching, we have the best teachers for that, and, and both, um, is important, and that investment in that PD time is, is going to be critical for helping prepare teachers for the upcoming school year. And then, I just want to say thank you again. Building multiple platforms that didn't exist before is a huge undertaking, and we appreciate all that you all have done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Macias, uh, it is a great report. As, as we've all mentioned, y'all, your team's just fabulous, and when y'all, you jumped on this back in March, and it's just been amazing what you've done. One of the things I really like about what I'm seeing here, and I know that last spring was a whole different deal, we were just trying to work our way through it, but I know that my five grandkids that are in school had different experiences with teachers. They would have, some of their teachers would be highly involved with them, and some of them would be checking in periodically but not highly involved. And what I'm seeing here is the teachers are going to be involved with the kids, and I think that's really, really good. So, uh, I appreciate that. And I just want to stress to anybody that's listening that may still be awake, uh, the survey is not, it's not personally emailed to you, it's on the website. And I think I've had a number of people that sent me notes going, when am I going to get my survey? But it's on the website. That's where it is. Is that not correct?
Are you referring to the back-to-school questionnaire?
Right, right.
Uh, yes, there was a link to access that, but you will need your Home Access Center login information. So, we did send emails to parents providing that information because many parents forgot it, didn't have it. So, those are the emails that they have been receiving.
Okay, all right. I hope everybody paid attention to that. Thank you very much. Do we want to keep this on consent, or do you want it to stand alone?
Consent.
Consent, okay. Seven I, the Board will consider approving the district's instructional material recommendations for anatomy and physiology courses. Any questions for Dr. Macias or Dr. Bergman? Can we move that to consent?
Yes.
Did you? I'm sorry. I don't, I don't want to hear what you said. No, that's all right. We're going on. Seven J, the Board, I'm going to be praying here. The Lord will cons- The Board will consider approving the issuance of career in technology education, CTE teaching permits to applicants in lieu of standard teaching certifications as established in law. Anyone have any questions for Dr. Macias or Dr. Bergman? Can we move that to consent?
Yes.
Thank you. The Board will consider approving the shared service arrangement between Cypress Fairbanks ISD and Region Four. Any questions for Dr. Macias or Dr. Bergman? Can we move that to consent?
Yes.
Thank you. The Board will consider authorizing the superintendent to execute the Memorandum of Understanding with East Carolina University for Speech Pathology Field Understanding with East Carolina University for Speech Pathology Field Placement and Texas A&amp;M University for the Master's Level Practicum for School Psychology. Any questions for Dr. Macias? Okay, can we move that to consent?
Yes.
Thank you, moving on. The Board will consider awarding bids and contracts and authorizing purchase orders as recommended in the posted agenda items. Assorted food ser, food for nutrition services 2020. Assorted non-food items for nutrition services 2020. Contracted educational services and professional development services. District fundraiser services. Roof repair services. Software license and maintenance renewal expansion. Can we move that to consent? Any questions? Yes, I'm sorry. Dr. Allright.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, I would ask that, that we not, because there is an item, uh, number one, that I will have to abstain from voting on.
Okay, so we're going to have that stand alone. Thank you, Ms. Blackshear. Seven E, the Board will consider approving the constructions, proposals, and contracts paid from bond funds to the recommended contractors and authorize the superintendent or designate to execute all necessary documents related to such contracts as follows. 2019 high school band tower replacements. 2019 high school band tower replacements infrastructure. 2019 transportation center's propane tank replacement and new fuel. 2019 Mansky Road site improvement package. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Morgan? Mr. Morgan, you awake out there? Okay, good. Anybody have anything for him? Tom, you don't have a question on the band tower replacements?
You know, I generally do, but I thought tonight, you know, Don's still trying to get out of town, and I didn't want to hold him up any longer.
All right. Can we move that to consent? Because I'm getting a little giddy. Seven O, the Board will consider approving the granting of a water meter easement to Cypress Creek Utility District for water service to Blile Middle School and authorize the superintendent or designate to negotiate the final terms and execute all related documents. Any questions for Matt Morgan? Nope? Can we move that to consent? Thank you. Seven P, the Board will consider the approval and execution of the plat for the Owens Elementary School property. Any questions for Roy Sprague? Can we move that to consent? Thank you. Seven Q, the Board will consider the approval and execution of the replat for the CFISD Perry Road Section Five for the Maintenance and Operations Centers. Any questions for Roy Sprague? Can we move that to consent? Thank you. Seven R, the Board will consider approving the amended and restated Declaration of Covenants, Conditions, and Restrictions, Restrictions for Legacy Park and authorize the superintendent or designate to negotiate the final terms and execute all related documents. Any questions for Roy Sprague? Can we move that to consent? Thank you. Seven S, the Board will consider approving the granting of a water line and temporary construction easement to the North Harris County Regional Water Authority, NHCRWA, located along Mills Road at Mansky Elementary School and authorize the superintendent or designate to negotiate the final terms and execute all related documents. Any questions for Roy Sprague? Can we move that to consent? Thank you. Seventeen, the Board will consider approving the granting of the right-of-way easement to Harris County located along Mills Road at Mansky Elementary School and authorize the superintendent or designate to negotiate the final terms and execute all related documents. Any question for Roy Sprague? Roy's full of answers out there. Can we move that to consent? Thank you. Seven U, the Board will consider authorizing the administration to declare certain undeveloped district property as surplus and advertise the property for sale in accordance with state law and board policy. Any questions for Roy Sprague or Marty Sims? Do we want to move that to consent or stand alone? Stand alone? Let's stand that alone. Seven V, the Board will consider authorizing the superintendent or designate to finalize and execute a purchase and sale agreement for the approximate 16-acre tract directly north of Hoover Elementary School and negotiate and execute any necessary closing documents, contracts, easements, utility service, post-closing, and development agreements, et cetera. This may be, uh, discussed in closed session. Do we need a closed session? Marty? Doctor Henry?
Yep.
Roy?
Yep. Just going to give you an update on what we're proposing to do. It won't take long.
Okay. So can I have a motion to go into closed session?
I mean, or we can do it on Monday if you want.
Y'all want to do it on Monday?
Monday.
Monday.
Monday, Monday.
Okay, so we're going to move that to Monday.
Monday.
Okay. Now I'm going to sit here and read the Tale of Two Cities, so if y'all are okay. I'm just kidding. May I have a... Lord, we are adjourned.
I just want to know what we're, what's being served for breakfast.